... chapter two thirty-one, Public Law, nineteen seventy-five. The final public meetings act. At good notice, this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of the public meeting is provided in a notice April twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices. Milton and Nuthley Sun, St. Our Lejeune, New Jersey Herald, The Dukes, and the Nutley Journal. Milton, Nutley Township Clerk, advertising the Nutley Sun and Make Sex Two Thousand and Ten, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please rise for a flagrant public announcement.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which is ours. One nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Who's there, follow up, please?
Here. Here.
Mr. Smith, we're calling.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Salama.
Here.
Mrs. Zado.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Okay, uh, proof of minutes. On June eighth, eight twenty-four.
I approve of this, uh...
Mr. Kozinski, the second. Mr. Spizardo. All paper. Okay, and schedule is, as two thousand and ten spring season awards have been afforded, this evening, and go directly to our curriculum presentations. So, uh, Mr. Zarek.
Yes, thank you. Uh, as everyone, I believe, knows, we've had a major overhaul of our curriculum from kindergarten through high school. These are the final presentations. Wednesday morning, we are meeting with the county office for a six-month review of our CUSAC report and the progress that we've made since then. We will be happy to tell them that all these curriculums, in fact, have been revised during the course of this three-year. I'd like to start with, uh, Mr. Odell, Chairperson of Social Studies.
Thank you, Mr. Zarek. Uh, as Mr. Zarek noted, we were in the midst of the NJ CUSAC revision this year, and, uh, I would like to start by thanking the administration, the board, and all the teachers and administrators who put an awful lot of hard work into this during all those curriculum sessions, and also a lot of work beyond. You know, people took work home, worked overnight. Uh, my particular document's four hundred and forty-one pages long, and, you know, as you can see, uh, by the other departments, you know, an awful lot of work went into every subject matter. For social studies, the timing was fortuitous in that the new standards were issued in September, uh, just as we began to process, and what were once six standards were condensed down to three, uh, with a heavy emphasis on history, that most of the common social studies, uh, skills, uh, but the content area would be infused into the historical part of the curriculum. Out of three standards were, uh, six point one, U.S. History, America and the World; six-two, uh, World History, Global Studies, and, in keeping with, uh, one of the emphases in, uh, the Twenty-First Century Skills, six-three, Active Citizenship in the Twenty-First Century. The curriculum's also divided into, uh, three benchmarks, grades one to four, five to eight, and nine to twelve. Uh, Mr. Carney, uh, helped oversee the, uh, one-to-four section, and here the teachers did an outstanding job emphasizing that here the students learn the, uh, first elements of civic virtue. And that's really the core vision of social studies, to develop the citizens we need for tomorrow. It's our whole rationale for being. So, the curriculum starts with what the students know, broadens out to, uh, give them a vision of the outer world, their country, their state, and by grades three and four they're starting to infuse, uh, history into the study of New Jersey, the early American Revolution, uh, to that period. Now, grades five to eight, everything becomes much more specific, and here's where most of the major changes were made. We designed this curriculum to address the three new standards immediately before, uh, a pending grade-eight assessment. So, in grade six, that'll be a heavy emphasis on civics. They'll use, uh, a series put out by Congress called We the People, uh, also working with the New Jersey Center for Law-Related Education, uh, Project Citizen, where students will, uh, frame, uh, civic issues, learn how to present them, probably someday be talking before this board or something like it. Uh, and also, for spring, the work on economic and financial literacy, which was a big push of former Governor Corzine and picked up by our current Governor Christie. Grade seven will pick up the early American history. Grade eight will be the first half of world history up to about the year fifteen hundred, setting the stage for their transfer across the street. Now, that left grade five, which was a place where we decided that we really needed emphasis on geography and the geographic literacy that you need as a citizen of the modern world. So, that curriculum, uh, is gonna use some new technology. It's also where we will infuse a lot of the technology that the Twenty-First Century Skills demand and working with, uh, Mrs. Seija and her curriculum. So, as you see up there, we have a program that we're gonna use called Stratologicum and make this work quickly. This will be on every teacher's smartboard. So, your old maps that you have, I'm starting very quick with this. You're seeing this on a, um, website, so it's not quite the quickness that you must see when this is wired into the smartboards. This is all the educational maps laid over Google Earth, and what allow the teacher to do is, uh, let's zoom down here. Everything becomes worth three days, so they can rotate. For example, we'll make a lesson on which way is south. They always confuse up and down. Now, they're gonna learn if you're at the North Pole, which way is south. Well, every direction is south. Uh, they are, they will now to compare, I can add a second map to this, and compare the political relief to the land cover. If I take this down, they can see how that will work. And then I can zoom this up, and both will zoom at the same time, so you can see the political margins as well as that. Now, if I decide to, uh, get rid of some of these maps and just zoom in, I can zoom in, as you would with Google Earth, and what I was gonna do, but I won't be very quick here because I know we have a lot to do, was, uh, you can zoom right into the Forbidden City, for example, and see how it is laid out. We'll make the, uh, point of geography and Chinese governance, that the Forbidden City is deliberately aligned to face down to south. Also, the teacher may start marking this, and I'll talk about some of the other things this can do while we're trying to zoom in on this, working on this internet connection. Uh, the teachers will be able also to, uh, create custom PDFs and worksheets for the students. The city one B, right there. And as I turn this, actually, I can rotate the whole world here, so it's actually proper north. See, the Forbidden City is rote oriented north to south because the Emperor's Palace radiate properly south was to create a prosperous and unified country. Uh, the teachers can create, uh, custom PDFs. They can mark them with current events, you wanna see what an oil spill is down in the Gulf? You can do that, print it out, hand it to the student, they can take it home. They can collaborate on projects as our technology gets better, uh, submit digital assignments, uh, work with their peers along this way. Uh, also, the Atlas program that they have is integrated right into the smartboard. The teacher can pull up the Atlas and mark everything up, just, uh, this is the wrong one. And show the students the page that they're working on back at their seat, and with all the tools, which we pull up, for example, they can, they can mark things, and without having to do that, they just give you a sense that you can do all kinds of, uh, things on this thing. You couldn't do it with the old maps that most of us knew when we were students. Now, as we move out of grades five to eight, I'm just leaving it there, I think we're, we're done giving you a rough idea of it. We go to the high school, where, of course, the content becomes, uh, much more detailed and reflects the demands placed on the mature learner. Uh, we will have the three mandated state courses, freshman year is the second half of world history, so they'll pick up with what they did in grade eight, and as they move across the street, pick up about the year fifteen hundred. Uh, we start with Bon and Plank, they tend to like that, and then we move on to Modern Times. U.S. One and U.S. Two are both mandated by the state. All courses are offered in a regular and honor setting, and for that junior year, we also offer advanced placement U.S. History for those students who excelled in, uh, U.S. History One. We also have a wide range of electives, multiple AP courses, uh, AP Human Geography, Government Politics, uh, Macroeconomics. We also offer, uh, European History, Russian East Asian History, Sociology, the Modern Middle East honors, Archaeology of the Ancient World. Uh, so we offer a lot to our students. This curriculum has all been aligned to the current standards and CPIs, and, uh, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Odell?
Yes.
I'll just be kind enough to, uh, point out the staff that assisted you on it.
Sure, um, they're all listed in the curriculum, so if you'd like me to read out all the names, it happens, didn't I?
Mr. Odell?
Yes. That's yours. I know, mine's your reminder, sorry about that. Um, mine. Mine.
How about the ones that are here?
Uh, the ones that are here? Um... Yeah, if you'd also take the stand and rise, please, just, you know, I did, I apologize for what... And Mr. Carney, and we had a lot of the teachers who helped out, Mr. Stoppers, they told me he was gonna be here, and he's on his way.
He is here.
He's here? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stoppers. They did an awful lot of work, and I'm very proud of their efforts.
We thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next presenters are Mrs. Seija and Mr. Ackerman with the Technology Curriculum. Mr. Ackerman will also remain for Fine and Performing Arts and Business. Can I begin? Thank you.
I'm stopping with the technology. Um, okay, so, our technology curriculum, K to six, uh, the most challenging part was developing the activities so that they seamlessly fit within what the teachers were doing, and, um, that worked well with Mr. Odell, had the opportunity to work with him, because he's developing this curriculum that's rich with the technology, the Stratologicum and the other, um, parts of it that he's, uh, using in the fifth grade and the sixth grade. So, we worked pretty well together developing some of our activities. Um, the standards for, mm, the elementary school are just A-one, Educational Technology, and A-two, Technology Education. The Educational Technology is the part where, you know, when people say, oh, kids know everything about computers. Well, contrary to popular belief, they don't. They are easy, they want to experiment, and they have no problem trying things out, but we teach them the skills that make them savvy to use these tools in the way that they will need to use them in the future. The, uh, spreadsheets using cells, margins, setting up columns, things like that that they don't get to when they're playing the games that they do. They are good at that, but there's other, there's other things they need to know. The, um, Technology Education, uh, if you've heard of the STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, this is that part of it, all right? The study of the technology and its effects on individuals, society, and the environment, like, simple things like recycling, all right? Um, how things work. In A-one, it's, to make it simple, make it, share it, find it, solve it, protect it, and use it. Those are the standards, and those are the simple ways of saying what we're gonna be doing with the standard A-one. A-two, this is where it gets a little bit more into the science. It ties in great with their curriculum. They ask, they imagine, they create, they plan, and they develop what they see things being used for and being done. So, I have a little video here. I don't know if you'll be able to hear it well. In this class, they were doing, um, they had to demonstrate Newton's Laws of Motion, so each child was doing a little experiment, so, let's see.
Thank you, you guys, that's my help.
Right there, that's the whole idea. The boys' experiment didn't work, and that's where the other ones jumped up. Well, maybe we did this, put our hands over here, we did... So, that's it. That's it right there, you know? There was no computer involved, but the kids were thinking about how to help this boy make this project work. We're on a mission. We're on a mission to achieve effective technology integration, making the use of technology routine and transparent as it supports all our curriculum. So, we're gonna take administrators, parents, and teachers from this to this. And that's a loving embrace. She's not looking to throw it out the window. It's a loving embrace, so that we can do this with our children, use the technologies that we can reach out to them. I'd like to thank everyone who helped me with this, my committee, um, Mrs. Laca, Mrs. Ramalde, Mrs. Tucci, Mr. Leslie, and Mrs. Outabado, she's good sport with those pictures, Mrs. Leonard, um, Mrs. Franchioso, and Mrs. Clerco, thank you for letting me run this. Appreciate that. Mr. Barron, Board of Education, for all your support, because in the curriculum, we've written in all the things that you've allotted the money for, for our subscriptions, and that's all part of what we tried to do, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Mine's a little longer, so I'm gonna have to, you know, it's quite a bit. Christie did a really good job of, uh, reviewing all the technology, five was it? All the technology components, uh, a little piece written. First of all, I'd like to thank all the members of the Board of Education, Mr. Zarek, Mrs. Franchioso, Mrs. Clerco, Mrs. Clidjo, for all their support in this endeavor. I would also like to thank all the members of the Business, Creative Arts, and Fine Arts Departments for their hard work and extra hours. When we first, uh, were given this task in September, I don't think that anyone could envision the amount of time beyond the seven-skeptical articulation sessions that would be needed. Many of the staff members came in early, stayed late, gave up their lunch, and even took work home on the weekends to complete these manuals. Our mission was to review our curriculum and ensure alignment with the current core curriculum content standards, where we reviewed and modified our curriculum as needed. Because of the diversity of the department, our curriculum touches on many different standards and goes across the board, addressing in or in part standards, number one, Visual and Performing Arts, number eight, Technology, which Mrs. Seija talked about, eight point one, and eight point two, and, uh, standard number nine, Twenty-First Century Life and Careers, which includes nine point one, Twenty-First Century Life and Career Skills, nine point two, Personal Financial Literacy, nine point three, Career Awareness, Exploration and Preparation, nine point four, Career and Technical Education. Nine point four includes sixteen career clusters, such as nine point four A, Agriculture, Food, and Resources, nine point four B, Architecture and Construction, it goes on, there's sixteen different ones, which we addressed pieces of all. Let me stop by saying that by the nature of our subject matter, technology is infused into our curriculum each and every day. We instruct on use of the latest technology, and we utilize the latest technology in our instruction. Keeping in line with technology that we use, in particular, Ms. Linda McDonald, our staff put together the following PowerPoint presentation to give everyone an idea of our offerings and sequence of study. This is education is introduced at John H. Walker Middle School in the seventh grade as an elective, as part of an elective of course, four courses, Concepts of Keyboarding and Word Processing, Computer Applications, Internet, Internet Safety, and Introduction to Technology. Each class is one more occurred in length. At the high school, oh, still got one. At the high school, as you can see, we offer a wide variety of elective options for all standards, starting in the tenth grade, designed to meet a variety of interests. Upperclassmen at the high school are required to successfully complete one year of computer applications. Students entering the ninth grade next year will be required to complete one-half year of computer applications and one-half year of the newly mandated, state-mandated Financial Literacy class. Options to meet these requirements are available, including a zero-period offering, a special ed offering, and an online offering. Popular electives offered include Digital Photography. Just ideas, some of the things that the kids do. Also, I'd like to point out that every year we enter a contest that's sponsored by, uh, Congressman Bill Pasquale. It's the Congressional Art Competition. This year, we were lucky enough, Mr. Rogers, Stan, and Mr. Dr. Reed came, and viewed the contest, and we were lucky enough to have two first-place winners, one in the, in the traditional category and one in the non-traditional category. This happens to be the non-traditional winner. These, uh, works of art will hang in Congressman Pasquale's office for one year in Patterson. We also offer Digital Photography II, Multimedia Class. One of the things that they cover in this class is a digital portfolio, and this is just a short clip of a digital portfolio prepared by the students. Fundamentals of Web Design, Business Law, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Accounting, Honors Accounting, College Accounting, the newly created Financial Literacy Class, beginning next fall, International Business Practice Firm, a class that we created and ran for the first time this year, turned out to be a very, very successful class. And finally, IT Essentials and Cisco Networking. All offerings are in alignment with the current New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. Technical Education, uh, Creative Arts, Fine Arts. As I stated before, our mission was to review the curriculum and ensure alignment with current New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. Our task became even more difficult this year, but mid-year, they changed from the draft, which we were told to, to use as a standard, and they had a finalized version, which turned out to be quite different from the original, so we had to go back and review and redo almost everything we had done. We reviewed and modified our curriculum as needed. The final results can be found in massive binders, as you can see here on the table, from the Fine and Technical Education. With Fine and Creative Arts Department at the elementary and high schools, we're afforded a rare opportunity this year to get together in groups and share ideas and techniques which prove to be invaluable not only to the writing of the curriculum, but to create continuity between schools and ensure a consistent sequence of offerings, starting at the kindergarten level and culminating in twelfth grade. Because of the diversity of our department, our curriculum touches on many different standards, as evidenced by the size of the curriculum binders that are on the table. We offer real-world learning experiences for all students, where academic standards are reinforced and students are able to apply what they have learned in real-life situations using critical thinking skills. In keeping with the theme of, uh, a presentation in line with, of what we teach, Ms. Karen Vanderhayde and Pete Barron, who are both here tonight, put together a short video showcasing what we offer at the high school in this department. Hope you enjoy it.
In seventh grade Technology, students will develop technical sketching skills to design projects that apply engineering skills by building and testing structures and airplanes. In eighth grade, students in Principles of Technology will advance their understanding of how more complex technologies work. They will apply engineering principles when designing and building mechanical and electronic projects. Students will develop woodworking skills when building CO2 dragsters and then collect and graph the data. Metalworking is designed to introduce students to the basic skills, technique, procedures, and processes of metalworking, welding, introductory machining by hands-on activities. Project development, materials measuring, hand tools, machines, operations, and safety are covered as well. Maintaining equipment, tools, workstations, and workplace and shop to provide safe work environments is everyday procedures. Metal fabrication is a course which deals with more complex benchwork, welding methods, machine operations, introductory in CNC and basic construction technique. Students learn occupational safety, material selection, project development and construction, heat treating, consumer awareness, and career awareness. Metalworking Advanced is designed for students who wish to pursue more advanced metalworking activities. Students in Electricity and Electronics learn basic principles of electricity and their practical applications. It helps students acquire safe work habits and develop skills in using tools, measuring instruments, circuit types, and components, and residential wiring concepts. Students will become familiar with the fine art of woodworking. They will use a variety of power and hand tools to create a multitude of projects ranging in difficulty from simple to complex. The student will be able to identify which machines are most appropriate for a particular operation while continually focusing on proper usage and safety. Students in Technical Drawing will be introduced to techniques and procedures used by professionals in industry. By the use of professional quality tools, students will gain proficiency in line quality, single-view drawing, lettering, geometry and drafting, orthographic projections, pictorial drawing, and computer-aided drafting. Furthering their education in residential architecture, students will learn about the planning, design, and construction of residential buildings. A complete set of plans will be produced for a one-story private residence, and a presentation model of the exterior will be constructed. By the completion of the third-year program in Civil Architecture, students will have researched, designed, modified, and modeled a small-scale civil engineering project, while working in a team atmosphere. Students adherence to both the levels and timelines are strictly enforced throughout the planning stages. The three levels of studio for role-production work enable students to learn through a true hands-on experience. Students in the program produce live news and sports campus studio programming aired on the local cable vision horizon and the closed-circuit Channel One channel at the high school. Many of the students have utilized studio production learning experience to continue broadcast communication studies through scholarship aid at some of the finest communication schools in the country.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm Julie Zalio.
In the hustle and bustle of our guidance department, Mr. Villia has been busy adjusting to a new role as guidance team leader. Let's take it inside. From the staff of NHS TV, uh, objectives.
In this segment of Question of the Week, we challenge the memories of faculty and students as a new decade is born. We asked, what is your most memorable moment in this past decade? From JP Zickery and the staff of, uh, Raider Nation, I'm Angela Lambro. Thanks for watching.
This past school year, students in the class of two thousand and ten earned college credit at Rider University in liaison with the curriculum offered in our TV Production One and Two courses.
Kindergarten, grade one. Students in kindergarten, grade one, will receive an introduction to the basic elements of art and principles of design through art production. They will use a variety of mediums and application methods to create original works of art. For each assignment, students will be introduced to the base of verbal and visual art vocabulary associated with the mediums and methodologies being used. Students will be introduced to the work of artists in various historical periods and world cultures. They will be made aware of how these artists use the same elements of art and principles of design that they are learning about. Grade two, three, and four. As students move from grade two through grade four, they should be developing an ability to identify, discuss, and apply elements of art and principles of design to art productions. They will be able to appropriately utilize a variety of art mediums and application methods, and will begin to identify which mediums... methods and will begin to identify which mediums and tools are most appropriate for specific works of art. Students will continue to view and discuss works of art and should be able to form opinions about these works based on how the artist viewed the elements and principles they've Grade five and grade six. By the end of grade six, students should be able to use what they have learned about the elements of art and principles of design to help them solve visual art problems. They will create works of art influenced by specific periods in art history and will begin to experiment with a compositional approach that is based on the distinctive characteristics of these artworks. Students will begin to recognize distances existing within artworks in various cultures, historical periods, and artistic genres. They will begin to compare and contrast these works based on the use of these elements of art and principles of design.
The program at John Walker Middle School has been refined to meet the needs of creative students with an interest in developing their art ability and improving their skill levels to an advanced degree. Sixth-grade students who take an interest in applying for fine arts in seventh grade experience an array of challenges through hands-on projects, art history research activities, and weekly at-home drawing assignments to enhance their drawing vocabulary. Students participate in an array of activities including painting, ceramics, drawing, and sculpting, which they incorporate various art elements in the principles of balance, harmony, unity, emphasis, proportion, and rhythm and movement in the creation of two- and three-dimensional artworks to express their creative ideas. Students also have the opportunity to show their work not only in the school setting, but locally in the community through state and national competitions when they arise. The adventure continues in eighth grade with Advanced Arts where the program continues with accelerated work being the focus. Students solve hands-on visual problems which arise from learning about various genres of art, both traditional and contemporary. Students leave middle school with a knowledge of various art genres, command of the art elements and principles, and the ability to critique and analyze various pieces of artwork which prepare them for the high school level. Art Fundamentals offers an introduction to art for diverse students of all levels. Students will assimilate the visual world into a creative process by using basic art principles and elements of design. History, culture, and aesthetic responses will be introduced. Technical life skills introduced in this course will expose students to job opportunities in functional art beyond the art studio setting. Art 1 will advance using elements of design to explore value, scale, and linear perspective. The principal elements of design will also focus on composition. Multicultural symbolism, metaphor, and allegory are understood and created. Intensive color study, portraiture, and print process will be introduced and manipulated on a technical basis. Use of diverse mediums will be explored, with introduction to genres and historical art periods of the past, as well as contemporary artists of today. Art 2 scaffolds Art 1, expanding art genres and technical creation of observational work. Students understand and create visual communication through social and political symbolism. Students will produce original artworks in multiple mediums that demonstrate the mastery of visual literacy, methods, techniques, and cultural understanding. Utilitarian and non-functional forms are created in the studio as well as public art installations. Portraiture with intense color theory and design will securize Art 2 students into the advanced level of art. Students participate, critique, and national competitions. In Advanced Art, students develop proficiency in art discipline-specific terminology and critical thinking skills. Students understand the relationship of art media, methodology, and art analysis that will enable the students to use expressionism, abstraction, realism, and naturalism, and other genre styles to convey ideas to the audiences. Technical career opportunities will be experienced in this course. Students will create portfolios and compete in a jury public art exhibition outside of the school environment. This rigorous college-level class utilizes all the design elements, history, cultural genres, medium, art terminology, and technical proficiency. Students will complete an extensive portfolio of breadth and concentration to be submitted for AP examinations. Students are proficient in the ability to synthesize the physical properties, process, and techniques for visual communication in multiple art media, including digital technology. They can apply this knowledge with success to the creation of quality, original artworks. Students' work is predominantly exhibited annually in college and national-level competitions.
I know it was long, but if you look at this, and this, and this, this is what the department is responsible for. It's quite extensive. In closing, I realize that funding's a big issue in the state right now. This year we have entered contests such as Best Buy Teach at 15 Award Contest, which we see $1,500 for. We also continue to apply Perkins funding, which helps our technical classes. In fact, a good example right here is probably Angelo Lambroschino, probably the best bowler in the state, and he's using a camera that we used Perkins funding to purchase, and we hope to get another one next year. Again, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to create this and to have the department work on all of the curriculum.
It might have been long, but it was extremely impressive. So thank you very much. Well done. Yes, you may.
You mentioned online offerings. Could you tell me more about that?
We have a computer applications class that's offered zero-period and is done online. Students meet once, twice a week. They get a certain amount of information, then they can complete the rest of the assignment at home, online, submit everything online to the instructor, and then they will come in again the next week for a period or two, zero-period, and they complete the assignment at home. So it's kind of a 25/75 split.
Is that the only course in the high school that has that?
That's the only one that we offer. Next year I hope to do a part of computer apps and personal finance class. So we will understand that part.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that Mr. Ackerman, as the years have gone by, in recent years, he's assumed three departments. And we'd like to thank you, as well as the High School 501 Coordinator. Thank you very much. My next introduction...
Just before, Mr. Superintendent, before we go, the people outside want to commend us plenty of seating aside. Those people in the hallway.
And it goes without saying that everyone, administrators and staff who worked on these curriculums did an outstanding job and have worked very, very hard. I'd like to point out, Ms. Melnick, who's head of physical education at the high school, I will introduce her, and anyone who was at the high school graduation. She coordinates every aspect of that graduation. So when every student comes, boy, girl, boy, girl, and they pull out their name and they have their diploma, it all works. And she's been doing it for many years. We thank you. Ms. Melnick will talk about physical education.
I know.
Yeah, no.
Good evening, Mr. Zara, Mrs. Franciosa, Mr. Riley, and the Board of Education. First of all, I'd like to thank the health and physical education teachers that worked on these curriculums. Sorry to say they've had different commitments tonight. I would also like to thank Mrs. Gina Russell for her knowledge in formatting the tables, organizing information. I'm going to drip water here. Organizing the information, printing seven pages, which was very helpful when I was finishing the curriculum. The PowerPoint presentation will be a brief synopsis of what we did this past year. As you can see on the slide, the six standards for health and physical education are 2.1 is wellness, 2.2 is integrated skills, 2.3 drugs and medicines, 2.4 human relationships and sexuality, 2.5 motor skill development, and 2.6 is fitness. Twist it up, right?
To the right.
Okay. The objective for us was to review, rewrite, and align the Nutley curriculum with the New Jersey Courserail on Curriculum Content Standards. The K-6 physical education was led by Mrs. Maria Dab, who was the facilitator. Ms. Robyn Powell was the K-12 health education facilitator, and I was the facilitator for 7 through 12 physical education. The first strand I'm going to talk about is the 2.5 motor skill development. As you can see, under each strand there are CPIs. CPIs are Core Curriculum Progress Indicators, Curriculum Progress Indicators. Okay, so under motor skill development, you have movement skills and concepts, 2.5A. You have 2.5B, which is strategy, 2.5C, which is horsemanship, rules, and safety, and then the next standard is fitness and physical activity. And as you can see to the right, it says compare the short and long-term impact on wellness associated with physical activity. That's by the end of 12th grade, students should be able to compare and contrast the short and long-term impact on wellness associated with physical activity. And what do we do in the high school? We do fitness days. A lot of schools don't like fitness days, but we do fitness days once a week. Once a week, we ask them to run if they can. They usually walk. We had a fitness unit during the health curriculum, but now that will be changing to the physical education curriculum. This is an activity pyramid. Usually you see a food pyramid. This is an activity pyramid for the five-to-nine-year-olds and 10-year-olds. This is from NASPA. NASPA is the National Association for Sport and Physical Education. Level one, walk to school, work in the yard. Level two, your aerobic activities, run, jump, and biking. Level three, flexibility, muscle strengthening. Level four, avoid long periods of inactivity, and then rest a little bit. So that's for grades ages five to nine, 10 and up. The fitness and physical activity for the younger students, K-2, grade level K-2, eight fundamental motor skills that all students should possess. They should be able to throw, kick, run, jump, catch, strike, hop, and skip. Without these basic fundamentals, they cannot go any further in life as far as selecting a sport or any other type of lifetime of fitness activity. So as you can see in the...I didn't write all these down because they do have a lot in the curriculum, just some of the activities that the elementary school physical education teachers do. They do run, they skip, they hop, they gallop, they bearwalk, they crab walk, they backfettle, and that's just a few of the things that the students do in K-2. The health standard, Ms. Powell, did not be here tonight, so I'm going to give you a little concept on the health standard. The health standards include wellness. That's nutrition, for instance, some medicines. Integrated skills, that's character development, decision-making. Drugs and medicines, ATODs, alcohol, tobacco, other drugs. And last one's human relationships and sexuality. I selected the one on wellness standard, 2.1. Underneath wellness is 2.1A, personal growth and development, 2.1B is nutrition, 2.1C is diseases and health conditions, and 2.1D is safety, 2.1D is social and emotional health. I'm going to talk about 2.112D6 to the right, and why am I going to talk about that? Well, I want to thank Mr. Catterbone and the administration for giving us the funding to certify all the health and physical education teachers. In order to teach CPR to students, which is going to be done by the senior year in September, all students will be taking CPR, first aid, and AED. So all the health and physical education teachers have to get certified, not just a certificate, but a certificate of instruction, so CPR instructor certificate. So all the staff and Mrs. Choffee got certified. So we will be able to teach this in September. So seniors will be taking this course, besides all the others. Our strengths as a school district are based on the fact that everyone works together. I'd like to thank Mr. Quiddsho, Mrs. Clerco, for leading us through the process of curriculum revision. The community, the Board of Education, administration, everybody works together. I think that's why we're a success here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Napolitano will speak to the Gifted and Talented Program.
Good evening, Mr. Zara, members of the board. The purpose of this evening's presentation is... is to formally introduce the Gifted and Talented Curriculum Guide. With your permission, I'd just feel like I'd be more comfortable sitting and being able to watch this, too. Now that we have completed three years of the program, I also thought it would be appropriate to share with you who we are, what we've accomplished, and why. First, we'll start with the why. Okay. This is...sorry. I don't know why it's doing all these lines. Okay, got it. New Jersey Administrative Code 6A8 was enacted into law on June 1, 2005. Known as the Gifted and Talented Law, the key components of this regulation are: All public schools must have a board-approved Gifted and Talented program. Multiple criteria must be used to identify students for the program. And appropriate educational services must be provided beyond the regular curriculum. Now, this law actually came about because of research that was conducted by the U.S. Department of Education. They found that higher-functioning students were not being challenged to master more complex material. They concluded that children who exhibit high-performance capabilities require services beyond the regular curriculum. Hence, the need for differentiated instruction, which happens to be our first goal. Our second goal was to implement a model developed by researchers called cluster grouping. In this model, high-achieving students have the opportunity to work with students of similar ability. Now, there's several reasons for doing this, not the least of which is our third goal, which is to ignite enthusiasm for learning. We do this by offering hands-on, student-centered activities in our curriculum. Like these students who are pictured here, who simulated the engineering process of creating a structure from design to blueprints to the final construction. Here in the picture, they proudly show off their partially completed geodesic dome. Or these sixth graders who are examining a staged crime scene, recording evidence, and will further investigate the crime through forensics testing. I think one of the most valuable experiences that a student gains from our program is the opportunity to collaborate with others to solve complex issues and problems. The problem actually that they had to solve here in our invention class was how to create an original invention. How does an invention happen? Where does it come from? What is the process? Well, that is exactly what 32 fourth graders did as they participated in our district invention fair. Now, pictured are a few examples of the prototypes they came up with. At the top, a student is demonstrating how his blue light works to an interested viewer. The bottom left, in the bottom-left-hand photo, that's Isabella, and she's actually trying to convince Mr. Zara that no trick to the movie would be complete without an original movie belt. You know, the one that can hold your snacks and your popcorn and soft candy. In the bottom-right photo, okay, now you've heard of a drop-leaf table, where, well, here a student is actually explaining the merits of her original drop-leaf chair to Mrs. Franciosa. We also thank you for being our special gift that day. Another one of our courses is called playwriting. Pictured here are the 2010 New Jersey Young Playwrights Festival winners, who also happen to be four Nutley students. Their play was a winning entry in the festival and was performed by professional actors at the Kane University Stage. Now, those are the Spring Garden playwrights in the front row, and in the back row, not as clear, are the actors that actually took the parts in the production at the stage. It was such an exciting experience for the students and their parents and the rest of the audience. We also had an exciting day on May 26. That was the day that the Nutley debate team, made up of gifted and talented students from Nutley, took the New Jersey Consortium's Debate Tournament by storm. Pictured here are the team members, holding their team plaque, as well as the fourth, fifth... Pictured here are the team members holding their team plaque as well as the fourth, fifth, and first-place trophies that they won there. As well as our identified component, the Nutley Gifted and Talented Department has developed a comprehensive program in school-wide enrichment. Based on a model by Dr. Joseph Ranzouli, school-wide enrichment is designed to reach a broader segment of the population by providing academic opportunities for all students. Now, let's take a look at one of our most popular forensics interpretive readings. In this program, students select and interpret a piece of prose or poetry presented to an audience of judges and parents and school members. Now, the interesting thing about this is that students can progress in this activity from learning how to effectively present a selection to performing it at a school tournament as a part of a team to having the opportunity to compete at the county or state level. Now, in this case, here we have pictured the first-place Essex County Forensics Champion, who also happens to be a Nutley student. There is a complete list of all these courses, these enrichment activities, in our curriculum guide with further details of our student goals, our identification process, and our philosophy. On behalf of the Gifted and Talented Department, I would just like to thank all of you, Mr. Zara and the board, for giving me an opportunity to share this with you tonight. Especially, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Mrs. Francioso. Three years ago, she had a vision and a belief that this district was ready to embrace a program for gifted and talented students and that it would be a success. And you were right, Mrs. Francioso, thank you so much. I also would like to thank Mrs. Clerico, on behalf of the other teachers and myself, for her enthusiastic leadership in this program this year. And of course, again, thank you for your time and attention. I leave you with this quote by Carl Rogers, which is one of my favorite quotes. "For every gifted child who is not allowed to reach his or her potential, there is a lost opportunity. That child might eventually have composed a concerto, found a cure for a terminal disease, or developed a formula for world peace. Wasting the potential of a gifted mind is reckless for a society in desperate need of creativity and inventiveness." Thank you.
Thank you. And our final presentation is Ms. DiVillo from Guidance.
I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Zara, Mrs. Francioso, the board, Mr. Catterbone, and Mrs. Clerico for all your help. Right around January, we switched from the 2004 standards to 2009, so that was interesting. I'd also like to thank my peers, Mrs. Coco, Mr. Morrow, Mrs. Mitchell, Mrs. Kirby, and Mrs. Fung. Our mission in the Guidance Department is to facilitate an academic and career, social, personal growth of our students. The councils interact on individual, small groups, large groups with the students. Sometimes it's small ones, a one-on-one basis, if a student comes in with a problem, or we're going down the entire student class to discuss something with them, whether it's based on the scholarships or based on the college search or the application process. We are constantly collaborating with our peers, the Child Study Team, the Board Committee, our SEC. So it's a very collaborative process in Guidance Office. Our philosophy, we recognize beneath this the personal growth of each, personal worth of each student. We strive to assist them in becoming effective students, effective workers, responsible citizens, who remains sensitive to all their personal issues, diversity, ethical, cultural, social, and sexual needs. We are always supporting the school mission to enhance learning process, assist students in making informed decisions, and be productive citizens. The next two slides are still in sequence. The Guidance Office is a very busy setting. From September all the way through to August, councils are in, meeting with students. Whether we're meeting with the individual support staff in the high school, with the students individually, we're constantly looking to how to assist the students, whether it's Encouraging the ASVAB, which is the Armed Service Vocational Assessment Battery, whether we're reviewing PSAT scores, Encouraging the PSAT, whether we are hosting a Instant Decision Day where we have seven rating on colleges and we're, you know, getting the whole application process going, whether we're doing career exploration, it's a very busy place. And when we approach senior year, that is where it's all coming to a culmination. So it's a very busy office, and the students are always in, it's a revolving door. We kind of touch upon some of the same areas as Mr. Ackerman did. We focus on 92, 93, and 94, which is the Personal Financial Literacy, the Career Awareness and Exploration, and then also 94 are the career clusters. And because there is an overlap with a lot of the departments, a lot of what we do supports what the other departments are doing, whether it's history, math, science, or the business of creative arts, the music departments, we're kind of a support team for them. What I've done is I've taken one standard, 93, and this one, it's very hard for me to read, it's great. "The career preparation requires purposeful planning based on research, self-knowledge, and informed choices." Again, we have these questions, we endure understandings, where we're trying to get, in this case, the students to realize that in a job or a career, there's a lot of competition that goes into it. Students in this society are, or adults in this society may not have one career for their life. They may progress, they may go back to school. There's room for personal growth within a field and exploring beyond a certain field. Skills and activities, and we're meeting up with them one-to-one, small groups, large groups. We're integrating technology with a lot of what we do, and I'm going to show you Naviance, which again is a wonderful tool that's, without the support of Mr. Zara's experience here, so we're not going to be able to do as much as we're doing now. We've taken Naviance to the next level just this past spring, where we tried to go as paperless as possible, where we're trying to get the students on board with Naviance, the staff is, we're getting the students on board, and the parents on board. That's where Naviance would really take us, kind of into the next, the next century, so to speak. Ian, can I? Two ways to get onto Naviance. One, you can just bookmark it, but for students that haven't bookmarked it, you go right to the Nutley High School website. There's a link to Naviance, which many parents do not know. Every September, we meet with freshmen, and we register them. Naviance Family Connection, we send them in password, we send reminders home in our Guidance Gazette, and not everyone is a freshman as we would like. Students need an email. If they don't have an email, we can just register them with a password. I created a fake student, since all the information under each student is personal. When a student logs onto Naviance Family Connection, this is where they see a parent, if they have multiple children in the building, has a pull-down menu, and they can choose whatever child they're looking to find information about. Now, one of these pages is actually something I started creating about a week ago. When you come on, you see a page, you see links to all the websites. We have financial aid websites down here. We have websites that link them to College Board and SAT, New Jersey Transfer, MyMajors.com, Fair Test, which is all the schools that are SAT optional. And then at the very top is one of the new ones I started working on last week. We have a graph for, you know, a difference between SAT versus ACT. And this one is kind of on construction. There's a lot of things that aren't 100% here, but I just figured I would put it on tonight. This is a page I created for vocational training. And again, it just gives the students another link to information that is out there for them. And everything that is on this page, that is a live link. When you go further into Naviance, you can go into careers, and this is something that could actually be used within the classrooms in the different departments. This student, Jane Smith, I made her interested in athletic training and physical therapy. That's kind of a hot field for the students nowadays. When you click on something, on one of the links, athletic trainers, it gives you a job description, it gives you all these tabs up here, the knowledge and the skills that they need, tasks and activities you would be doing on the job, and then, again, going into Personal Financial Literacy, understanding of what you could work, what you can earn in this field from state to state. Scrolling down to the bottom on the first page here, related occupations, and then in many cases, they give you a video where it explains the field to the students. So it's a very important tool that we use in the Guidance Office.
The athletic trainer. This member of the team keeps players in top shape. The most important part of the job is helping athletes prevent and recover from sports injuries. Working closely with team doctors, trainers, ramp injuries, and supervise physical.
And then the other tab in here, colleges, students that are interested in starting the college application process or the college research process can start as early as freshman year. This is available to all students from freshman year on, and as a student becomes interested in the school, they can add it to a list of schools that they're interested in. So I'm going to click on Marist here for a second. And what it does, it links you right to the school's website. It gives you information about the school itself. It shows you the history from Nutley High School, so it stores data for us, so it helps us to give the students a good idea of where they may fit academically and socially. So it really is an endless tool of information. So this is something that aids us in our department, and when you look at the career clusters, it could also help the other departments and high schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I get to your questionnaire, Mr. Kaczynski, I just want to personally thank all the staff, all of our work, and the incredible undertaking that's been demanded of all of us for all the changes in order to become compliant with the new core curriculum content standards. So thanks all for your script job. Ms. Kaczynski?
If I may, we have one more, I believe we have Elementary Guidance, and it will take a very short time. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Mr. Buck, you had mentioned that parents sometimes don't take advantage of this.
Yeah, when you log on to Naviance, you'll also see there's an inbox, and we send out emails on a daily basis to our students. And we have the option to send them to the students and to the parents. And when you, you consider every student in the high school is logged on and does have a password, and the parents, you can see who's highlighted, who is active and who is not, and many of them aren't. And it's a shame, because we send out a lot of information. Sometimes I, you know, whether it's community service project, whether it's, you know, coming to the college fair, there's a lot of information that we do send to the parents, and they're not getting it all.
Electronically, can we do anything beyond what you're doing to get the word out to the parents?
Mrs. Hughie has attempted to help me with the PTO. She's put it in her newsletter. I went to the May PTO meeting and spoke to the small group of parents that were there. They were all excited, some of whom were parents of sophomores and juniors, and were quite upset that their freshmen didn't tell them two or three years prior what it was about. It's, and it just shows you how little sometimes the parents are actually reading the things that we're sending them, because it's in every single Guidance Gazette issue to call your child's Guidance Council, get your password, get registered, because they're missing a lot.
Since obviously we're all PTO reps, it would be...
There's also a component that can go down to lower levels. This can be introduced as low as the fifth and sixth grade. So if we can get the parents on board at the low, at the elementary levels, where they're sometimes a little bit more visible with the PTO, then it kind of can triple all the way up to high school.
Yeah, and we could probably push it more.
The career component could definitely be used in the fifth and sixth grade, and without a doubt, seventh, eighth grade as well.
Then you need to, need to make sure that information is coming down to us.
We try. We're trying our best to get it out there.
No, we're coming out to the boardrooms, because we have a PTO meeting, so we can certainly push that out there. I'm sure Mr. Rogers will include it in his...
It definitely helps, help out with it.
Is there something?
In response to Charlie, from my PTO days, there was also the individual school announce that had an email service that went out to the parents that signed up for it. I don't know that I've gotten anything from the high school this year, so I know most of the PTOs utilize the PTO announce, but maybe we could get our principals to make more use of this school announce.
It's just such a good asset that we could be missing a little. Maybe we could do a segment on our TV show, something on the TV show, people love to watch the board meetings.
You need to get the word out, so I agree. Mrs. DiNell? Very sorry for any delay from the physical...
That's okay. We'll make it very quick, I promise.
Mrs. DiNell is joined by Mrs. James.
We, as you know, are the Elementary Saks, and we have devised a resource curriculum book, as well as to redo the curriculum, rewrite it, or create it actually, because there was no SAK curriculum prior to our student curriculum. Our curriculum is aligned with the New Jersey Core Standards, which focus on health and wellness and the 21st century life skills. The standards start at 2.1, down to 2.4, as well as 9.1. And these address social, emotional, and academic needs of the students in the elementary level. We have, each month has been themed, which is in line with the Six Pillars of Character. In addition to every month, in this particular one, we're showing you the month of October. You do have this book, we just wanted to present it. The Month of October, which is a very big month for us, which is red ribbon and violence awareness as well as bullying. We address all of these areas in this month. We have presentations that are done at each elementary level. This ties in with the report, I believe it needs to be sent to the state every year on what we do for Violence Prevention Month. And the lessons are provided for both the primary and the upper elementary level classes. In addition, on each one, at the end of it, there's a bibliography of stories, novels, and websites that may be utilized by the teachers for character educate, that contain character education themes. And in line with these, the standards, we are assisting the students to develop personal awareness and personal, explore personal goals, which is part of the standards that we are designing. Do you want to talk about some of that?
Well, Oliver and Ben, 2.1 through 2.4 focus on the emotional, sound, and communication and relationships, which is what we focus on with the younger students. Also, 9.1, 21st century life skills touches on how we function as a global citizen. So we want to send our students out there, we want them to be able to interact with others, communicate well with others as fully functioning communities. That's our goal, yes.
And we provide a comprehensive and developmental guidance in the counseling program that impacts all of the students K to six, from kindergarten to sixth grade. We are there to help them learn to work and to work in the 21st century. Again, as I said to you before, the academic year is planned out here. September is getting to know you. We have activities for the children to get to know each other throughout the classes, as well as learning the goals of the teachers, as well as the school. October, again, as we said, and then the Six Pillars of Character go on. Alcohol awareness is in the month of April. And the month of June is Transitions, which we work. I actually did this year with the sixth graders, the transition from the sixth to the seventh grade. We had a very short, small curriculum. I went into the classroom with the sixth graders, and it was really wonderful to get them ready for the middle school and let them know what to expect going forward.
Just a little bit about what the SAK council is, what we believe, what's our mission. We really, we work collaboratively with the students, parents, teachers. We want to remove the barriers that may impede any kind of student achievement. We want them to be able to come to school, focus on their schoolwork, and help to remove anything that may be standing in their way emotionally. We go into the classrooms, we deliver guidance lessons, we do conflict resolution, we focus on respect for each other.
Small group, small group construction, as well as one-to-one counseling for issues that may relate to, there may be issues in the family, there may be a death, there may, there's various things, anxiety, whatever we can do in addition to being an outside resource for parents. You know, we're not a therapeutic, obviously a therapeutic community, but we will give outside referrals for the students also, in addition to the lessons, as you said, in the elementary classrooms.
And we, you know, focus on having a positive attitude. We want all our students to think positively, and hopefully we are a resource to help them with that as they go about their day as elementary children. We want all our students to think positively, and hopefully we are a resource to help them with that as they go about their day as elementary children.
And just in closing, you know, as I said, the curriculum is in line with the standards of the state. We totally feel that children have the dignity and worth of human beings. They learn best when they feel good about themselves and others around them, and understand their feelings, and they can better control them. And that's part of between the health, health curriculum and what we're doing, working with them to learn these triggers and the barriers they may face, and helping them to make more responsible choices. And how we shape them from this level and bringing them up to the seventh and eighth and thereon, we're hoping that it will continue throughout.
Start and I'm going to try to shape their attitudes right away.
That's it.
Mr. Riley, I'd like to advance an idea based on what I've seen tonight. My school, Mr. Zara, about some time ago. It's a taxpayers' tour of the Nutley schools to include the extraordinary work and accomplishments that we have witnessed this evening. I can tell you, I got a fine education. And I believe a taxpayers' tour of our school district will let the investors, the taxpayers of our township, know that they are investing their dollars wisely, that there is something very substantial and good being accomplished in this school district. So, Mr. Zara, if we could talk about that and perhaps set up such a tour, maybe this school year, and I would ask my colleagues on the board to join in the discussion.
Yeah, we could actually discuss that later on in the new business, in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just one question. I know you had talked about starting younger, and we talked about going sixth to seventh. Do you, do you start first grade, second grade? Do you, do you talk about bullying, which obviously is a major concern?
Absolutely, kindergarten, absolutely. Usually in the beginning of the school year, I do go down and try and introduce myself to the newer students, obviously in kindergarten. I have been, I currently work with Mrs. Claro and Mrs. Stell at Lincoln and Spring Garden School. And they have been very supportive in allowing me to go in, and we go in and we do things when problems arise. We try and make ourselves very, very visible to the students and the school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Denal. When we first began the new year under the new board, just about two months ago, I put forward a five-point plan. And the first item on that five-point plan was a three-year academic plan that I asked the superintendent to put together. And it kind of ties in perfectly with all the new curriculum changes. And this time, I'd like to have the superintendent to present that to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. In researching, eight characteristics of excellent schools. High expectations for every student. Strong parental and community support. A rigorous and relevant curriculum with formative and substantive assessment in place. Sufficient resources to help all students achieve. Safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments in each and every classroom in particular, and throughout the schools in general. Schools and classrooms equipped for teaching and learning with 21st century learning tools. Highly qualified teachers in each and every classroom, and strong principals. I believe we have those. But certainly, we can do better. While my 10 goals are not dramatic alone, when put together, I believe they, these initiatives, coupled with our revised curriculum, will raise student achievement. Mr. Vitale Meister. Goal one, to create a culture that makes academic success for all students a core value of the school district. Each and every day, we have to remind ourselves and be reminded that we have to have high academic standards, and we can't deviate from those. And we do expect and we must ensure that all students can learn. Goal two, along with something along the lines that Mr. Rogers mentioned. Develop an exit survey for graduating seniors to assess the school district's effectiveness with its clients, and also a survey randomly around the community to determine what people, the citizens, the parents, think regarding the job we're doing. And gathering that data and doing something with it, addressing it. Three, complete revision of the K to 12 curriculums, make certain that is implemented beginning September 2010. In conjunction with the newly revised curriculum, we will create a bank of exemplar strategies, units, and lessons aligned to the new core curriculum content standards. Goal four, require and provide continued professional development opportunities to promote high achievement of students in state. Goal five, review the evaluation process for non-tenure teachers and create an effective mentoring program for new professional staff. Six, make a decision regarding the implementation of code kindergarten through September 2010. Goal seven, work cooperatively with stakeholders to strengthen support systems to enhance success in schools. This is a wonderful community, and many organizations and many individuals are highly motivated to support our schools and help our schools and our students. And I think we have to take these support organizations that provide parents and community members the opportunity to become a model, welcome them, and make sure that we formalize and maximize their contributions. Continuing, complete all school construction and provide a safe, clean learning environment to support the education mission of the district. I believe everybody here understands what we've gone through over the last few years with construction. It's been ongoing, it's touched every building. We have tried to minimize the disruptions, but certainly when you have major school construction, lost schools through the session, it has an impact. I believe that we're all looking forward to the end of this construction and getting back to normal, and of course, newly renovated schools. And goal nine, testing. It's part and parcel of everything we do. Bring every resource together in a coordinated effort to address standardized testing. Included, basic skills classes, inclusion classes, HESPA prep course, similar to the SAT prep course we have. Continuity of construction for New Jersey ASK and HESPA. Lunch and learn programs focusing on writing and math strategies, differentiated instruction and performance assessment. Continue early intervention with programs such as Wilson Reading, Everyday Math, and Simple Math. Create a bank of strategies, units, and lessons aligned to the new core curriculum content standards to be utilized by all staff members. And finally, require greater accountability from old administrators to ensure progress towards these goals and successful outcomes. Separately, they are not remarkable. Together, I think they bring focus and energy and combined resources to bear to carry through the educational mission that we have, and also to make sure that we take the curriculums that our professionals have worked so hard for the last year and implement them, and of course, make sure that we continue to turn a quality education. This is the first blush, if you will, of the plan. Certainly, working with the academic committee, working with our coordinators, working with Mrs. Brancio, so and our principals, we will continue to add, refine, tweak, and make sure that these changes are instilled in every teacher, every staff member, every administrators we will afford. And certainly, this is the first presentation, but after we have an opportunity to talk to the board about these, we will finalize them, revise them, and then put them up on our website. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest something that I suggested once before, and got a pretty negative response, but I'd like to suggest it again. And I think we should consider a program that will help parents to help their children learn. I think you could have Socrates teaching them. And if you don't have parental support and the help of parents, it generally doesn't work out that well for the kids. I think we should look into providing a program where the parents can come and get help so that they can help their children. I think we should add that to this program.
Correspondents? Superintendent's report?
Yes, let me just reach for that, Mr. Riley. Thank you. I firstly will want to thank Mrs. Brancio, so Mrs. Claro, Mr. Clitchell for really shepherding this curriculum revision through the school year. I'd also like to thank Mr. Vitale Meister. He's on call, it seems, 24/7, never says no, and always gathers all of the information and puts it together in a format that is presented to the public this evening. I'd like to thank him because he certainly does work very, very, very hard. And he's a resource not only to us, but every teacher in the city and the nation, so we thank you. I'm asking for a special meeting, I don't know what everybody's scheduled, it's for July 12th. We have not returned the non-tenure teachers. It's my plan to review that with the personnel committee and present those non-tenure teachers to the board of approval behind July 12th. Interestingly enough, I was interviewed with Channel Time News Brendan Flanagan, which is not very, very remarkable, but the information was. She was doing a story on teacher attendance. And the reason she called Nutley an interview is we have the best teacher attendance in the area. And statistically, the inner city averages about 7% absenteeism. Very good school district, she informed me, averaged about 2% absenteeism. We were .9. Essentially, if you take every staff member and multiply it by 180 school days, we had 81,000 individual days of work. And those 81,000 individual days of work, we had 592 absences. That's remarkable, and I was very pleased and I'm very happy to report that. Additionally, we hear a great deal about students leaving the Nutley school district after they graduate from middle school. Of approximately 360 students who were promoted from Franklin, I'm sorry, Walker Middle School, 16 students opted not to attend Nutley High School. 16 out of approximately 360. I don't think that's any huge spike, I think it's pretty consistent, perhaps even a little lower. June events that we've all experienced, 15, were the elementary academic awards, I'm sorry, the elementary graduation, the academic awards and scholarships of high school. The 17th was the preschool graduation at Lincoln. The 21st was the kindergarten, 22nd Walker Middle School, 23rd, I'm sorry, 22nd also elementary schools, and the 23rd high school graduation. I'd like to thank everybody on the board who attended so many graduations. It's a culmination of a wonderful school year, and your presence was noticed and greatly appreciated. And finally, after a great deal of work, on the 30th, this Wednesday, we will be meeting with the county business administrator and county learning specialist for our sixth month Q Sac reunions, you, and we present in our curriculum to them this Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zara. Board Secretary's report?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Regarding the 16 students that opted to leave the district, are there plans to actually have exit interviews with their students?
Mr. Clitchell, audits from the middle school actually conducted those, and I have every destination. Some are relocated, but some have opted to probably go to a school for varying reasons. Some, for example, their parents have gone there, or perhaps they think there was athletic game. There's a number of reasons, but I certainly can break that out, and Mr. Clitchell's helping to report.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
Yeah, but 16, I don't think is a very, very large number out of 360. But thank you.
No, I appreciate that.
And if I may add one thing, Mr. Riley, I made this note. With the tragedy that occurred in Central Park, with the tree bridge killing the young child, it's very important that we have Mr. Nicoletti, and I will ask Commissioner Tutu to give us assistance with changing, to look at all of our trees on our school ground between now and September and make an assessment, if we have any branches that should be intended to. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
At the May 10th board meeting, the board passed a resolution regarding one of our construction projects, in particular, the high school electrical work. And in that resolution, we had to award the bid to the second lowest bidder because the initial bidder, who was originally a board of the contractor, had rescinded their bid. In doing so, under the direction of our construction attorney, he declared the original contractor in default of its obligations to execute the contract, and the board authorized him to proceed against the contractor's bid bond. So I just would like to inform the board as well as the public that we did receive a check this week from IDJ Construction in the total amount of the bid bond, which was $20,000. In addition to that, in the middle of last week, we had a visit from...
Can I, can you just tell everyone what the differential was between the second bid and the first bid and the low bid versus that $20,000 that we received?
The original bid was for $779,425, and the bid we actually awarded to the second contractor was $1,071,400. On Wednesday, June 23rd, we had a visit from the Department of Treasury, Division of Public Contracts, Equal Employment Opportunity Compliance. And an investigator came to the district. He spent the entire day with various members of the business office, as well as Mr. Nicoletti, reviewing all the contracts that the district has authorized, as well as all purchases in excess of $29,000 to any single vendor during the 2008, 2009, and 2009, 2010 school year. He was looking for bid advertisements, mandatory affirmative action language, contract compliance issues. And needless to say, my office was running at high speed that day to get him all the information that he required, and I appreciate all of their efforts. We do have some issues which we are resolving, and we will be receiving a report from that office with the status of those review.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Riley, Health and Fitness, Mrs. Russo and I will be meeting with the mayor tomorrow to discuss some health related programs that we would like to advance in this district this coming year. In addition to that, you know, we have a real fine foundation, the Deltrude Foundation, right here in Nutley. One of the great things about this town. They have a basic curriculum on melanoma, and we'll be meeting, when I say we, Mrs. Russo and I will be meeting with the superintendent to discuss the possibility of inclusion of this lesson, a much-needed lesson, may I add, on melanoma poisoning in our health curriculum classes. So that's our Health and Fitness Report.
One more thing.
I'm sorry. The New Jersey School Boards Association. I'm beginning to receive some mail from them regarding some legislation that's going to be affecting school districts, and I will pass these on to the rest of the board each time I get them. There is two important bills that we need to keep an eye on. One is a bill that will require school board members to undergo criminal history background checks, and would disqualify members convicted of any crime that would disqualify a person from public school employment. That's not too problematic, we probably would all agree with that. But here's a bill that could have a chilling effect on volunteers. The Assembly Education Committee has released a bill which calls for criminal background checks, checks on all school volunteers. Now, this has been a, it's been a discussion about this, I know at PTO meetings, where if a mother wants to come to lunch and volunteer to keep an eye on the children, will she be required to get fingerprinted, and will she be required to submit to a criminal background check? Right now, that answer is in limbo. So this is a bill we have to keep an eye on, and it's something that as a board in the future, I think we need to discuss whether we're going to support that bill or not. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
King Nuggets? Now come to the fourth hour of meeting, where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions and comments, only the resolutions, the rest, and the next agenda. Board Regulations, regulations, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be eliminated in three minutes, as we state within a requirement. Speakers may speak only once after others wishing to speak on the topic of the current. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and may adjust the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is being lightly, personally directed, due to the seeing of relevant redundant participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each time. As for the other person, please step forward.
Anyone on resolution? I have a zone.
I have a zone.
Alan Thomas, 101, 108, McKinley Street, here it up. Mr. President, I would make a few questions, if I may, regarding the contract with Mrs. Yaman's, according to the schedule H. I'll ask whether some of the provisions are customary for business administrators, such as five weeks of vacation, paid vacation, in addition to one week of personal time, which is Section 5 of the proposed contract. It's curious about the numerous references to tenure and non-tenure throughout the contract. Mr. President, I wasn't aware that the administrator got tenured. And I, for some reason, I guess because of my own profession, particularly concerned with Section 16 on outside activities, because it doesn't include the typical letters that the business administrator has to devote full-time attention and professional duties to the district, and instead commits a wide range of activities outside the district. That is of her discretion. A long time ago, the district needed to be advised about outside activities, which would require a one full working day away from the district. So if you comment that these are standard provisions in all business administrators' contracts throughout the state, I suppose we don't have much to choice if we are business administrators, and I do find these provisions are unfair.
Do you have any other questions on your contract?
I don't have others.
Counsel is here. Will he handle that contract? Be happy to be helpful, please.
Firstly, business administrators do get tenure. If they're in the position for three years, they get tenure on the first day. So it's a tenure position, to answer the first question. Secondly, the form of the contract is a form that follows closely the form that applies to most business administrators. The question specifically about vacation or personal time mirrors what all the administrators in the district have, and it mirrors what the previous contract provisions for previous business administrators have obtained, as does the Core 16, which talks about some outside activities, but she can't be absent for more than one full working day. That would have to be reported to the Superintendent. I would venture to say, perhaps our VA may want to address it, but with the amount of work that being the business administrator of the Nutley School District requires, I don't think she's going to have, frankly, much time to be involved in the outside activities. And the contract does provide for her to work not only in the normal hours, but it also requires her to stay beyond hours, because that is incumbent upon a business administrator and part of the job, because she's here for the late meetings, et cetera, unlike some other administrators. We also kept within the parameters of a salary that was...
I have no problem with salary.
Okay. That's the answer to what you referred to, I think, that satisfies you.
The answers don't satisfy me, but I understand the answers, and I thought, unless a Board member want to actually do something about...
Well, I think that the Board members don't have to speak on that. I think that the answers to the question were yes, to the original question. I said it's standard in the industry, so to speak, the answer. I understand, and I should just follow us. Yes, you may respectfully disagree with that, but that's my takeaway from what Mr. Prong said.
So some of the answers, one of the answers was standard within the district, and that's what we, I thought a new Board of Education sort of came in. Mr. President, there's also a reappointment of other district-wide staff. Are we, are you going to be voting on individual contracts for those staff members as well?
Could you be more specific?
Well, not to pick on her, but I just happen to know her name, Mrs. Kakuza's name is on a, that, was there individual contracts for people like Mrs. Kakuza, Mr. Vimey, and
All the Board is doing this evening is just reappointing them in their current positions, but they haven't taken any action regarding salary or contract provisions. And yes, most of them do have individual contracts.
And that's what we will be discussing on July 12th with a special meeting on the Board to announce. Sure. Anyone else? Then go ahead and ask your question.
Mr. President, I very much oppose passage of Resolution 13.
Is that a superintention or...
And the appointment of the Board of Administrators. I'll tell you what passage of this resolution means to me. It means that the Board will continue to get advice on the Open Meetings Act law and the Open Records Act law that turns those laws on its page. It means we'll never find out how the district went through design changes with referendum money, so we now have to pay that estate for those changes. And I suppose, most expensively and most curiously, it also means that we will never get to the bottom of the tri-tech scandal. How an illegal contract could go, be in place between this district and contractor for 10 years without various business administrators, the Board Attorney, auditors, Board members who attend continuing Board of Education classes, is, should be of extraordinary concern. In any other public entity, this would be the subject of a special investigation, either a special committee appointed or a special counsel.
Can I make a point of order, please?
No. In a real world, such as a corporation, there's...
Mr. Riley, I'm calling for a point of order. And I believe I have the right to do that, counsel?
You do.
Okay, one more. I believe, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that the public should be asking questions, not lecturing the school board on an action that they are going to take one way or the other tonight. So instead of going into this long lecture, I would ask that, either you, Mr. President, or counsel, ask the public at large, right here, if you have a question.
Do you have a question, sir? We understand you're opposed to Superintendent's Resolution Number 31.
Well, then, my question is, is this Board of Education ever going to get to the bottom of the tri-tech scandal? Is it going to launch its own special investigation?
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas. There's nothing we should add. There are, Derek, our investigation, we'll have to speak. We have counsel, we have a separate counsel that's looking into all the legal matters, and I'm sure you understand exactly what we're talking about. We talk about it all the time. And ultimately, the answer to your question, so we can cut to the chase, ultimately, yes.
You would have been appointed special counsel to investigate.
There's no special counsel to investigate. You understand exactly what we're doing. There's no reason, there's no reason to be facetious, Mr. Prong, please.
No one's being facetious.
No, I believe you are. That's my interpretation. I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Thomas.
I'm going to ask the question.
We're not going to debate it, and it clearly says in the rules, that if you become abusive, I will have you sit down. So I think you're right at the precipice here. We're pushing the envelope, and I will not allow you to push the envelope. We made your point, we understand it, we respect it. I can respectfully disagree with your point, but your point is, will we ever find out? And the answer is yes. Guess what? The answer is not tonight. Tonight is not tonight.
Is construction counsel, Mr. President, charged with doing the investigation?
I'm not going to discuss the ongoing legal ease of what our counsel is or is not doing. It's not appropriate, it's not the venue, and when the time comes, you'll have your answer. Tonight is not tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate your call.
Anyone else?
Okay, at this, at this time, we're going to move to executive session for about five minutes, just to quick, discuss some personnel legal issues before we go through the resolutions. And right after we read the resolutions, which should not take long, we're going to have our discussion on the Lincoln Road. So where is the Board of Education? We're discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA, 10th and 14th Board of Education, that therefore be resolved at the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss the following legal issues. If further resolved, the discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, and reasons for such matters in closed session no longer exist in the system. Second, Mrs. Zara, Deltrude.
Mr. Prong, please, Mrs. Prong.
Mr. Cooktop?
Here.
Mr. Zinski?
You see her?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Mascurtola?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sodder?
Here.
Mrs. Sada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Prudon.
Mrs. Zara Tolle?
Yes.
Kind enough to move Superintendent's Resolutions 1 through 36.
Wow, taking it difficult. Mr. President, I like the rule of items 1 through 36 as listed, and I state my extension as an objection as we know.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Zara, discussion. Mrs. Russo.
I have a couple of questions. Superintendent's Resolutions 15, 16, and 17 remain to schedule CPNA. Do we have a previous year's salary listed, or percentage increases or increases, if any, on their schedules?
That is not listed on the schedule. These are, this is a three-year contract, it is a salary guide, it is a bargaining So we have zero input into any change in salaries as scheduled until negotiations are taken.
Any other questions, Mrs. Russo?
I have another question. Does the public have a copy of the suspension list that you could buy to us? Does that go on the website?
I don't believe it does, no.
In the minutes of 5:24, closed executive session that we just approved this evening, you made reference that there were three students around.
Mrs. Russo, we're really discussing, does that fall under these resolutions? I don't believe it does. I think that would be either for a business order, we pass that portion away. Any other discussion on the resolutions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have a statement regarding Superintendent's Resolution Number 1, retirement of the assistant superintendent. I ask that you bear with me. Ladies and gentlemen, if it was the will of Miss Franchosi to stay in our district, I would vote no on this retirement, because I believe it would be unfair to her as a longtime district employee who has, during her entire tenure, demonstrated extraordinary commitment and dedication to this school district. She deserves proper compensation for the work she dedicated her life to. Mrs. Franchosi, and many of the fine educators that we have in this district, have become victims of a reckless policy born in Trenton, New Jersey, which shows good, dedicated people to the door as their reward for their years of service, their commitment, and their dedication. This reckless policy also forces boards of education like this one you see here, and I want to make something very clear to every member of the public who's listening to this. Every Board member here is a dedicated individual who labors tirelessly over many of the decisions that have to be made. So I just want you to know that, as colleagues, I respect the decisions and opinions that you make, but I have to share mine this evening. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, the value of the almighty dollar is replacing the value of the best and brightest that we have in our school districts around the state. And the sad commentary about all that's going on statewide and what we're being felt here at home through the retirements of our teachers, and especially the fine educator to my right, is that the true victims of such public policies are not the staff, are not the administration, but the true victims are the children of our district. So with great reluctance, and I mean great reluctance, when it comes time for me to vote on this issue, I will be forced to vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, do you have a question?
I suppose I have a question. It's a statement, Mr. Zara, I'd like to compliment you on picking the three people that you selected to be our vice principal, our coordinator of music, our coordinator of science. I think these people are competent and hard-working, and I appreciate the fact that you've selected.
Thank you. They certainly have earned our consideration. They've worked very hard and with great, great effort. Thank you.
Mr. Zinski?
Yes, Mr. Riley, thank you. Just a brief statement, and I mention this to our Superintendent. I need to congratulate the Superintendent, the VA, this Board. I think in the two months that I've been on the Board, and in the two years preceding here that I've been involved in Board meetings and sitting in the audience, I think this is aggressive agenda that we have tonight, a lot of time and energy put into it. Unfortunately, there's a couple issues here that I agree with Mr. Rogers on that need to be dealt with, but other than that, the movement of this Board, the movement of the Superintendent, the VA, I think is a positive move that I think is going to reflect very well in the community.
Anyone else? Please call our own speaker.
Mr. Cooktop?
Yes.
Mr. Zinski?
Pathetically, yes.
Mr. Mascurtola?
Okay, I'm going to abstain pursuant to law on item 1. I would say yes on 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Yes, on 12, 13, 14, anyway, if I haven't missed one, let me know. 15, 16, I'm going to abstain pursuant to law. 17, 18, I'm going to abstain pursuant to law. 19, I'm going to abstain pursuant to law. 20, 21, 22, 23, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, I believe the rest, and we'll come up to 36, I assume.
Dr. Reed?
Yes, on all. I just wanted to abstain on number 14, and that's to reiterate a point that I had brought up in our Board meeting two weeks ago regarding the RFP process for Board Counsel, which, again, not to target any particular individual, I just feel that that process should have been an open and fair process. Regarding this particular resolution, I have my reservations about voting in the affirmative because of the violations of the six points that were addressed in that best practices report for the best practices for issuing RFPs. So yes, abstain from 13.
Mr. Rogers?
As I say, there were great reluctance, number one, yes, and then yes to the other.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on all, except I abstain on number 1 and number 18.
Sada?
Yes, I'm staying on 1 and 8, I'm sorry, 1 and 9. My wife's suck application, and one more, 18, and the rest, yes.
Mrs. Sada?
I vote yes on all.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, I abstain on 1, 16, and 17. Mr. Sodder, will you please move Board Secretary of Resolutions 1 through 22?
Yes, Mr. President. Actually, you know what? You can move them all. You can move 1 through 24. The, so again, the items are Resolution 23, which is the approval purchase of window shades in 24 being, you know, let's hold out on number 24 if someone, Mrs. Zara, will want to speak to that. So move 1 through 23 as listed.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to move Resolutions 1 through 23 as listed.
So, Mr. Zinski, discussion. Mrs. Russo.
Question on being Resolution Number 15, Educational Data Services, the $1,950. Can you tell me what that's worth?
Ms. James?
In addition to providing all the bids for a lot of our classroom instructional supplies, graduate oil supplies, et cetera, et cetera, which is approved under the paper resolution, Educational Data Services also goes out to bid on a lot of cooperative skilled trains, which the district has used in several instances, such as HVAC repair, paving, and things that may... Can you tell me what time period that prepayment covers?
This will carry us through the summer and, um, should carry us into the beginning of the fall.
So we make that payment approximately accordingly?
Um, it's on an as-me-me basis as it's presented for your transportation, so that we're not putting too much money in the account.
Anyone else? Mr. Rogers? Mr. President, I want to make sure the public is aware that we are aware that Resolution number eighteen, the safety grant, that there is wording, if you could explain, uh, Mrs. James, uh, regarding, on page fourteen, now therefore be resolved that Township of Nutley... Yeah, we're going to change that to the National Board of Education. So for the record, we'll show that, uh, the final paragraph has been changed. Now therefore be resolved that the National Board of Education. We'll enter into with the, uh, Ms. Dowd. Thank you. Uh, before I get to you on that, Ms. Scaratoli, I would like to, uh, just say that, uh, explain to the public that, uh, number eighteen is a shared services grant, shared, uh, with Commissioner Pacheco's office, and we thank Mrs. Pacheco for bringing that grant to our attention at no cost to the National Board of Education, and hopefully we'll realize a hundred thousand dollars to the district if, uh, that grant is approved, which I hope it will be. And, uh, we're also working on another grant through his office as well that's a non-matching grant. Mr. Scaratoli?
I'm going to talk about the twenty-four.
No, but you just...
It's one to say.
But we didn't move it. We'll get to it. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Cooktop?
Yes.
Mr. Zinski?
Yes.
Mr. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, on all, the communication bills.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, and all abstain on number seven.
If, if we could just go back to Mr. Scaratoli, I believe he wanted to abstain on number seven.
Yeah, I got it. Look, you give me that one to thirty-six, that's going to be for the curve, Mr. President. So I'll abstain on number seven pursuant to law.
Thank you. Continue the call, roll, please.
Mr. Sodder?
Yes, all abstained, and number seven, I abstained on.
Mr. Bizzotto?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
I abstain on number seven as well, and, uh, I, on Resolution number two, I abstain on check number zero eight three four three four, and the balance, I vote yes. Now, Ms. Scaratoli, if you'll move, uh, Board Secretary Resolution number, uh, twenty-four.
Mr. President, the adoption of Memorandum of Understanding, COPCOP, as be resolved, Board of Education approves the adoption of the Tax Memorial memorandum of understanding for the COP secure our schools grant between Township of Nutley and the National Board of Education, sub-approving by our Board Attorney and Township Attorney, I so move.
Second, Ms. Cooktop, thank you. The Chair would just like to, uh, yield to Mrs. Kakuza, I just want to make sure that there were four dead board members present that abstained on Board Secretary Resolution number seven, and I want to make sure that the record shows that, that Mrs. Russo, Ms. Scaratoli, Ms. Sodder, and myself will abstain on number seven for the record. Thank you. Okay. Discussion on twenty-four, any more discussion on twenty-four?
Does everyone in the audience have a copy of, uh, the, uh, what's your mark? Oh, sorry.
Does everyone in the audience have a copy of, uh, Pop, uh, Resolution twenty-four, the Memorandum of Understanding?
No, yes.
Okay, good.
I just wanted to clarify a few things regarding the Memorandum of Understanding. Um, as Mr. Rogers said, it's a joint venture between Township and the National Board of Education. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to commend Mrs. Cavone for bringing this, uh, grant to our attention to the board, and truly, uh, God sent me getting it because it was a match grant. Now, this board has taken a position about not approving or going for match grants, but this is entirely different, because this match is a match of money that we've already allotted for security in the school system. We have a budget that we've been working with and putting forth all of the security measures to upgrade all our schools from nothing to the extreme, the high school and all the elementary schools. The middle school is the only school that was left out of the referendum in 'oh six, so therefore no monies can be expended for the middle school. With this grant, we are able to put up one hundred thousand dollars of our money that is going to be expended in the security aspect of it, and we're going to receive one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, what I would, uh, probably have talked with my board members lately, uh, later to discuss the fact that a hundred thousand dollars in a match that we're getting from the grant would be used solely for the upgrade of the Franklin, of the John Walker Middle School, because there is nothing here, and we were unable to do so, and now we'll have to put a big card access system in as well as CCTV cameras, make this school as secure as a rest of the school would have done. So once again, I want to thank Public Safety, I want to thank Commissioner Pacheco for his hard work, and once again, for Mrs. Cavone to bring this to the board. So, uh, as I speak about this further down the road, my recommendation, based on the assessment that I put together for Mrs. Cavone to put this grant through last week, um, was to expend at that time the money of the one hundred thousand dollars towards the, um, John Walker Middle School. The second, the second phase that we need to discuss is a matched portion of it. We have the opportunity to truly enter into agreement with the township regarding what's called dark fiber. Dark fiber optics will link Public Safety to Town Hall, to the library, to the high school. We will be able to do things that were unthinkable some years ago, but now with the technology that there is for fiber, will cost us nothing after the now. I believe the cost is going to be thirty thousand dollars. I'll go on the record right now, I do plan on meeting with all of the commissioners to see if they would be anting up anything, so we can put up half, and they can put up half too, of fifteen thousand dollars, and if we can't, we can't, but we are going to, hopefully move ahead to make that bridge. We own about thirty inches of the telephone poles that run along the line, six poles. What that means, the thirty inches of the poles, it allows us the opportunity to bring our own equipment in to hang the fiber to go from building to building and end up in the high school, so that you'll have two entities separate and apart and secure, but also working in units. It will allow us to have a data flow back and forth, storage of data, the bandwidth will be greater, the speed will be nine hundred times faster than what we presently have now. So when you talk about true, uh, shared services, it's a dream of mine with security that we will be able to link with the police department in emergent situations to the video that we have in place, to allow them on a secured line with a password at the appropriate time to view exactly what the school district would view in a lockdown situation. As a former law enforcement officer, there is nothing worse than riding in on a job that you have no idea what's going on. We're able to give them, and lay it up, by looking at the video that we're seeing of a lockdown situation or an emergency situation in a specific school, it would be great, it would be unbelievable to have a tool of that available to listen to. It's available, the software is there, we have the equipment, all the cameras that Mr. Vermeister has picked are above what we're needing, and that's what I've been talking about, so thank you for your time, and sorry for being a little long.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Cooktop?
Yes.
Mr. Zinski?
Yes.
Mr. Mascheratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizzotto?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, and I would like to thank, uh, Ms. Scaratoli for all the work he's put in, which was, uh, considerable with, uh, Mrs. Cavone in, uh, making sure that, uh, this grant, uh, was written, and its entirety completely, uh, be stated, it's on, uh, strenuous demands, and, uh, I thank you for your time. Yes. At this point in the meeting, uh, we're going to discuss something that, uh, has been discussed before, which is full-day kindergarten. And about two weeks ago, uh, the board sat down at the last meeting, and that, that topic was raised. And as a board, for the last six months, we've received retirements, uh, notices of retirement from staff members, from administrators, and from custodial and groundskeeping staff. They, I would say, came in till as late as something we just found out about today. So during that time period, we decided that, uh, we wanted to revisit the topic of full-time kindergarten. And one of the questions that I brought up two weeks ago was, how do we, how do we get there, not next year or the year after, but how do we get there in September? And, uh, it's a difficult discussion to have, because the budget is what the budget is. You know, we were, we were given a, uh, a directive by the governor to cut our budget by three point two million dollars, which we did. This committee, uh, headed by Mr. Cooktop, worked real hard with, uh, the VA and Ms. James in, in putting the budget together. And, uh, we had to make some difficult choices, some, uh, deep staff cuts, uh, we looked at programs, we looked at everything, and at that time, back in April, we decided there's just no way we can do full-time kindergarten. But now with all the retirements and, uh, with the Assistant Superintendent abstaining for the next ninety days and then, uh, moving on to the next phase of her life, uh, we started to visualize some additional savings. So then, we said, where could we go from here? Is it feasible? Is it fiscally responsible? And is it logistically possible with the, with the moves we're going to have to make to put it together if we do move it forward, uh, to move it forward? And on Friday afternoon, I had a conference call with the Board Secretary and the Superintendent, and, uh, I, they'll tell you, I, I pushed pretty hard, and, uh, to make this happen for September. And what we came up with was, was that if it's the will of the board, which I believe it is, and I'll talk about that in a minute, uh, that we could, we could get it done this year. The quandary really has been, what do we do in year two, year three, if the cuts continue and the governor decides that, you know, we're going to go from two point five to one point five, or wherever we go down the road, what do we do? Well, one option is you can put it out the referendum. That's not a real pleasant option as far as we're concerned, but it's an option. Uh, so at least it, it gets you where we want to go for year one, but year two is currently undefined. So after I had that discussion with the Superintendent and the Board Secretary, I called every board member and explained to them the conversation I had with them, and I, uh, said that we would discuss it on Monday. I asked everyone if they had any specific questions or concerns, and the concerns are many, obviously. You know, it's an expensive program, um, we don't really have a lot of money, and this is going to really take us to the bone, if you will. And, but I, I personally believe that it's, it will be done with fiscal responsibility. I think it's, 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 it's something that's long overdue for now. It really is. I, I can't believe that we're even going to discuss it. But, you know, we're socially responsible, we're academically responsible, and I really want to thank this entire board, who really spent a lot of time with me over the weekend discussing this and, uh, issuing their concerns. And then I'm going to turn it over to the Superintendent, the Board Secretary, to give you the roadmap of how we're going to get there, but really, it, it's, it doesn't leave us a lot of time to, uh, navigate, if you will, the logistic issues such as, you know, do we shut down the cafeteria to make it a classroom and, and, and put the, uh, put the children back in the gym for, uh, for the lunch program? I'm not saying we are, I'm not saying we're not, but these are, these are all things that have to be discussed, and that's why we're having the discussion tonight, so everybody gets a flavor for what would be necessary. So then, if you don't do, if you don't shut down the cafeteria and move the kids to the gym, and by the way, what portion of the elementary schools already have an option to gym? What schools have an option to gym now?
Washington.
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 Okay, so I mean, it's not, it's not, not a lie, I mean, it's happening already, it's not, it's not a pleasant, uh, move, but given, given the option, do you have full-day kindergarten or do you, or do you move a, uh, you know, do you move us into the gym for lunch? In my opinion, it's, it's, uh, not a difficult question. Now, the other issue is, if you go out and spend money for a trailer, put another trailer outside and have it in the trailer instead of the gym to take down the, uh, the cafeteria. So these are all discussions we'll have in a moment, but for now, I'd like to turn it to the Superintendent, uh, to give us his ideas.
Thank you. Um, there was great educational merit to full-day kindergarten. Uh, those of you who were here for the, from the beginning of the meeting saw a, uh, a revamp of the curriculum, kindergarten through high school. And I must emphasize that when we did the kindergarten curriculum, Mrs. Franchioso and Mrs. Clerco were emphatic that we should do it for a full day as a contingency to put that in place. So we do have a curriculum for full-day kindergarten in place. Secondly, uh, we know that students benefit from early learning, early intervention, uh, from all of the positives that can come out of doubling their time in the classroom at a very, very young age. Um, I have no reservation academically. Uh, my concern, and I think everybody here's concerned, is affordability. Uh, it, it is an option to, uh, put this together and then look for referendum approval next year, perhaps the year after, and I would, I would never speculate on what the future will bring regarding Trenton and funding and caps, because that's changing daily. But I, I think what we have to realize is that we have eight weeks, eight weeks to do the physical part of it. Certainly, we will handle the communication with parents, we will make recommendations for staffing, we have that penciled in, we have the curriculum available. I'm sure there's things that we have not thought about yet, that as we work this problem through, they will come to us, tables and chairs, desks, supplies, whatever. Uh, what I, I think, and I know that Mrs. James has been working very hard on this and really carving this out for one or other responsibilities, is affordability. So, not that I'm finished, but I would like to defer to her the authority where we are with the finances for this.
In reviewing the status of the budget relative to all the retirements that we have received, and going over the positions that need to be replaced, positions that the Superintendent would love to have restored, as well as some other movement that is taking place within the district, we are close to a net gain of about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which will be the first line to be appropriated towards the kindergarten renovation and staffing. This, the budget for the next year was put together, and it was extremely tight, there is very little wiggle room. We are going to need the cooperation of every individual throughout the district to be very mindful of expenditures, and we are going to move through two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, um, and maintain the budget the way it is. There will be very little room for anything extra outside of what, as, probably next to nothing extra other than what was placed into the budget. So, uh, everyone was extremely mindful of the current year's budget and did a very good job of controlling the costs, and I anticipate that that will continue so that we can be able to provide full-day kindergarten. Uh, most of our issues come to starting with getting the rooms available. A lot of the work will be done by our own personnel to keep the costs down, and with all the other construction going on in the district, it is going to be very tight, but seeing that this is a priority for the board and the Superintendent, we will do it, make every effort to make sure that it is covered.
Thank you very much. You guys are right here, Ms. Mr. Zinski, that will be the work for you, right?
We are going to move through 2010, 2011 and maintain the budget the way it is. There will be very little room for anything extra outside of what, probably next to nothing extra other than what was placed into the budget. So everyone was extremely mindful of the current year's budget and did a very good job of controlling the costs. And I anticipate that that will continue so that we can be able to provide full-day kindergarten. Most of our issues come certainly from getting the rooms available. A lot of the work will be done by our own personnel to keep the costs down. And with all the other construction going on in the district, it is going to be very tight, but seeing that this is a priority for the board and the superintendent, we will do it, make every effort to make sure that it is covered.
Thank you very much. You got to start right here with Mr. Zestik, then we're going to work for you, right?
Thank you, Mr. Radler. As you know, I've, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. As you know, I've been very involved in this myself even before I got on the board. It's hard for me to believe that nothing hasn't been in the forefront in all-day kindergarten as compared to our neighbors. With the board that we have here, with Mrs. Jamons on board now, the diligent work of the superintendent and the fiscal responsibility that we showed already in the two months that this new board has been in action, I know we've been frugal, we found some money in places that we didn't know we even had, making reference to the America, the Energy for America, whatever it was that, we saved about $2,000 a month there. And I know we're going to continue to do that. I certainly am in favor of it and whatever you need from me, I'd be glad to come forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I wanted to say, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one thing. I know you recognize the board for us moving forward on this, but the teachers, the administrators that have put the time into, the two steps of this are already done. The curriculum is in place, the rooms are there, no matter how we configure them, the rooms are there. Now the finances are there, we're ready to move forward.
Thank you so much. Dr. Zestik?
Needless to say, I have a vested interest in this process. My daughter just started her pre-k program today at a Washington school. But again, I'm cautiously optimistic in the sense that looking at the cost analysis. And my primary concern would be, it seems to be a tall undertaking in the eight short weeks that we're planning. Logistically, that would be my primary concern in terms of, is it going to be housed at a couple of schools, is it going to be whole throughout the five grammar schools and so forth? And again, the shortcoming with what Ms. Jamon just shared with us now, the shortfall in that budget, the $200,000 that we have to make up.
No, that's the extra.
The extra, but didn't we say that it's going to be about four and a quarter to run that program in its entirety? Or three? I don't know. I don't know.
We said 5 was the initial number, but that's dependent on whether we need the trailer. If we don't need the trailer, then we're closer to, I mean, three.
And again, I can attest the educational merits that Mr. Zaur described earlier in terms of early intervention, early education. So needless to say with other districts, as you mentioned earlier, while it can double that it moved in that direction, I can't see why it can't move in that direction as well. So of course I would have to at least endorse it in full support.
Thank you very much. And we share your concern over the logistic concern, the logistic issues that lie before us. And I've been assured from the staff that that is not insurmountable. So I feel very comfortable that we can get it done, or else how would you sit here having any discussion? Mr. Zaur?
Okay, Rob brought up some good points that I had also. I'm 100% behind you. My question I do have still, maybe any clarifiers, we said we have $215,000 to go. Now, we know we have the rest of the money to run the program.
Will you just back up a second? Because one of the critical components of what you discussed earlier was based on these superintendent's recommendations of the staff. We haven't had that meeting yet. That meeting is going to happen on the 12th, the staff that he wants to discuss with us. But that's a worst-case scenario is what she just described to you in detail to you. So if we were to bring back, I guess, Mr. Zaur, 100%, is that what your point is?
If.
So we still have, if we bought everybody back, we still have the money? Does that answer your question?
Yes, this is my question. You got my support.
Mrs. Russo?
I have the same concerns that have been expressed as the program is stable. I don't know that I'd like going out for a referendum in years two, three, or four or so on. And I don't know that that's such a wise idea. I have a question. Would if you offered it, all five schools would be offered a half-day program in any of the schools?
It would have to be all five schools.
So then my concern would be with lunchtime, space issues, space constraints there. Also, if we had additional money before we add another new program to the school, is the administration satisfied as far as class sizes in the high school? Has that been addressed adequately? Do we have any issues there?
Again, class size in high school is a function of the course and the time of day. English I tend to be larger than honors, honors tend to be a bit larger than AP. Classes during lunch periods are smaller than classes before and after lunch periods. But I think also, high school not only is it class size, but also it's a space issue during the course of the day unless something's changed, which I doubt, there's not one unoccupied classroom during the course of the day.
Well, there are avenues we can do to kind of collect that, but we think you want to avoid those. Back when I was on the budget committee, I knew Mr. Kushda was the budget chair.
Could you say that? I didn't hear that last. Can you repeat that?
I had my phone on.
Oh.
I don't know which state you're referencing.
I think you made reference to something about that, will you avoid that or something? Did you just repeat that?
Yes, we seem to avoid how we could free up more space in the high school. We don't want to, seem to want to talk about adding to a school day zero, nine period or block scheduling, but that's not the conversation.
I would respectfully disagree with you. I don't think we've ever even really sat down and had a real discussion about if you want to put it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, I'll do that. Back to this conversation. When I was on the budget committee, the budget chair, Mr. Kushda, initially said the first year out, he was looking at a projection of approximately 350,000 to 375,000. And I understand you've come up with approximately 215,000. So it concerns me that we have 160,000 not available or not yet budgeted for. Are there different numbers for the first year out than what was anticipated?
No, I don't think anybody said 215,000.
Yeah.
I thought that Ms. Jamon said.
Yeah.
The original estimation of the program was 375, which included getting a trailer and having a trailer hooked up, which was somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000. Since then, some of the numbers have been revised by some of the principals based upon the enrollment that they currently have. And they revised that number down to about 300,000. But we definitely need to have more of a discussion of where the enrollment is going to end up so we can determine the correct number of personnel.
So you're saying the immediate part would be 300,000 approximately?
That's the revise, no, but I just get that.
But we don't know whether we need a trailer or not. If we did, would the other 35,000 be more?
No, I think 300,000 included the trailer. The only thing that they said here was that there'd be one less teacher needed because of lower enrollment. So you take the salary of the teacher plus benefits and you're pretty close to it.
Right.
So then we have a shortfall of about 85,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerco?
Yes, I'm quite pleased and very happy to be a member of the board now that this has come through. We've talked about it for years and it has never come, and I can't say this word, I want to say fruition, but futation comes out, but... Kind of gave me a little lullaby. It's warm out, so. But I have to commend the staff and the administration for the job of putting this together. Kenny, to you personally, for being very convincing, and that's a very, I use that word very loosely, convincing in putting this together and getting the numbers. Now, on a personal note, I want to thank Mrs. Francios personally for all the hard work that she has put in. She developed the curriculum, she's under the personnel, and it's been a thing that comes on the heels of her retirement. Now, if you're around a little attitude because it's going to bridge. So now that her retirement is accepted, I have no conflict. So I can say that it's bittersweet in one respect in seeing her go as a retiree myself and people know. But, you know, everybody is replaceable. But I've always said that, but at what cost? And that remains to be seen over the course. So I wish her well on her retirement. And going back to the kindergarten, I'm very happy once again, we're all going to move forward. And it gives me great, I mean, to talk about the board, as someone said before, the board enjoying together and doing what we have to do to reach a common goal. Because I've said many times before, the common thread that we all have is the love of our district and the love of our children for this school. It may sound like, you know, a little bit it is, but it's the truth. It's always been with me, it's been with many of the members on this board, they've always thought about that all the time. As you can see in what we do with the shared services with the inter-agreement with town, there are many more things out there that we could do to save this district money. I'm working on one thing right now presently with the, I meant to mention Jason's name from the town, but I don't know his last name. I've only spoke to the kid 100 times in the last five days, but I don't know his last name. Who was very, what was it?
Jason Kirk.
Very good. I mean, great guy, him and Ian, you know. But there are things that we are going to look forward to doing that is going to be able to save the district and the Board of Education real dollars. And once I get that, we'll put it in. So thank you very much for that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zaur?
Well, it's hard to follow.
It's hard to follow Yogi, but I'll do my best.
No, it's all right. If we have the money, I think we certainly should do it because no matter when you want to do a magnitude of this size, there's going to be a problem. You're going to say, well, we can't do it now because insurance costs are too high. You can't do it now because there's too much expense for healthcare. You can't do it now because there's too much expense for staff. So if we can do it, we have to do it, I think, because it will be a lost opportunity. So that's number one. Number two, let me ask some questions. Will this be mandatory full day for all kids? Or will people that choose to keep their children home for a half a day be able to do that? Because I'm pretty sure that there are some parents that would like to have that bonding time, so to speak, with a young child for that half day.
I have to confess, I would have to research that since we've never had full-day kindergarten. It's never been a question that's come up. I'm not quite sure what the answer is. I would lean towards this is a district requirement and I think that if we're talking about full-day kindergarten, it would make sense that everybody was educated at the same level moving into first grade. Certainly those people who go into school again, they would be deficient in many areas.
Well, I agree with you. I'm just speaking about the parents and what they would like, you know, and asking if that could be accommodated. I don't know if anybody would be interested, but I think they probably would be some.
A backward answer is that we have so many of our half-time kindergarten students who are in extended day program, so essentially they're out of the house soon, okay? So we would have to look at that. But we'll get the answer very quickly. We're going to be seeing the county office on Wednesday, we're coming up for a six-month Q-SAT review, and we'll have some questions for them.
Okay, I have another question, too. We're going to have the money for the full-day kindergarten. Will we have money to supply health benefits for the small group of per subs that didn't get them last year? Or will that be eliminated as a result of having full-time, again, eliminated as a result of having full-time kindergarten?
I don't think that's a question we can answer today, but I agree with you. It's something that we should look at.
We will make every effort to do that, is that true?
In my opinion, I think it's what you've said many times.
All right. Well, I think it's a very good idea to have all-day kindergarten, not only because of the academic support of the kids, but also I think you're going to encourage young people and families to move into the town with more encouragement because they will have a full-day kindergarten. So I think from that aspect, it's also a good plan. And if we have the money to do it, now's the time to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Zaur. Mr. Radler? I believe the last Board of Education last year, promise was made to the public that if you pass the budget, you get full-day kindergarten. We should honor that promise. All the questions I had were answered. I do have concerns, as I know all of you do, rightfully so, about the finances, but I'm not a business administrator, I'm not a superintendent of schools, so I have to rely on the expertise of these individuals. I mean, a few old folks ago, I'm going to go with you.
Before I get to Mr. Cook, I just want to call, Mr. Cook is like my voice of reason, like the angel on the shoulder whenever I stray in the wrong direction. Fiscally speaking, I rely on Mr. Cook. He's extraordinarily bright and talented and we go at it sometimes, but in a good way. And again, I'll reiterate that he worked tirelessly to put the budget together. And I was at the meeting as a sub tonight for the finance, the final finance committee meeting when we talked about pulling full-day kindergarten off because there was just no way that we could make it work at the time. So I want to thank him. And by the way, I'm on the spot now, he supports full-day kindergarten. I just want to say that before he goes. Jim, for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have no fear, I will voice my opinion.
Please, please, Mr. Jim.
Certainly from an academic point of view, it should be a requirement for the district to go forward with it. My concerns, though, are financial and logistical. Not so much logistical because, you know, given the low power, you can move a lot of things quickly, although I have some concern in that we have really the space in each of the grammar schools to do this, hold this off in September. But again, you know, you can move mountains if you, from a logistical point of view. From a financial point of view, that's where my concerns are. I'm familiar with what was taken out of the budget as a result of the cuts in state aid. And for example, there were nine teachers' positions reduced, reduction in the middle and high schools. There were reductions in some of the custodial staff, which, since then, Ms. Jamon saw that there are some holes that have to be filled. We cut out a lot of the technology money. Fortunately, there was some money left over this year so that we would have spent extra spending this year, but, you know, so the sustainability question issued in my mind with respect to technology. And then even a greater concern to me is the sustainability of all-day kindergarten, given the climate in Trenton. Again, nobody knows what's going to happen in Trenton, whether the 2.5% hard cap would be put in place or not. If it were put in place, increase in healthcare costs would chew up to the entire 2.5%. So to maintain, you know, we might be in a position where we have to build a referendum or we have to go back to not day kindergarten. If it were at the 4% current cap, the benefit of the retirements is bringing in teachers at the lower level, the bottom step. All those teachers will go up a step come next year, and that will chew up to the other 2.5% and get you to the 4% increase cap at that point in time. So I have real concerns about the sustainability of all-day kindergarten at this point in time. Also, we haven't reviewed what's to be restored and what we can and cannot, you know, from a priority point of view, what positions should be, are higher priority than all-day kindergarten. Certainly, you know, test scores are on the rise, in safe harbor in the high school, and I would hate to see that jeopardized by having an all-day kindergarten and not having adequate staffing in the resource rooms in the English department and the science department. So I have those concerns also, and so that's where I stand.
And I share those concerns with you, no question about it. You know, I harken back to a meeting that we had maybe two months ago where we kind of put the pressure on the superintendent in asking him, will there be a negative impact academically, especially at the high school, which we've discussed many times as we've just reached safe harbor? And we were assured that even with all the staff cuts, that we would not suffer academically and at school. We discussed having department chairs pick up some slack, and some had no classes, some had two classes, some had four classes, and we discussed having more parity there where they would be able And we discussed having more parity there, where they would be able to fill in staffing positions. So the fact that we were at that point two months ago, and now we're talking about bringing back everyone and still having full-day kindergarten.
I think the reason that we are at this point is we do not anticipate retirements that we realized. In September, I really was looking at perhaps three or four retirements. I think we're at 27, so with the savings in salary benefits, I propose to discuss with the Personnel Committee and then the Full Board on the 12th, restoring some of these positions, but that's why we're proceeding cautiously. We're trying to meet two goals. Bring back staff that while we certainly were going to live without with the $3.2 million reduction, it would be very, very beneficial and wonderful thing to restore them. But also, keeping in mind that even in restoring those positions, we have $250,000 in benefits. So I think this, one thing I do want to point out is we are meeting with the county on Wednesday, the county business administrator and county learning expert. And what we really have to pose to John Corrad, the county business administrator, Mrs. Yamans made one of his suggestions of bringing him to schools that need renovations. He's going to tell us what we have to do. We may have to have an architect engaged, we may have to submit plans for change of use to Trenton. I have no idea how long that would take. So we're going to have a clearer picture of the facility side of it by Wednesday at lunchtime.
Yeah, and I would suggest that in our meeting at the 12th, I will attempt to move the resolution to move this program forward for September. And I understand sustainability and I understand finances somewhat. And I'm sure that Wallington 15 years ago was in the same position where Dr. Caciolo said, I'm not sure if this program could be sustainable for next year. And now he's about to start his 16th year and we're just talking about it. So I'm not worried about sustainability because I think this district and this board is committed to moving this program forward and will find the money. And like you, Jim, I'm less concerned about the logistics, even though we're hearing that we may have some complications depending on what happens on Wednesday. So we'll have a much better feel. But as far as I'm concerned, it's my mission to move the program forward in September. And I'll have a resolution to that effect on the 12th. Barring something catastrophic, which I don't anticipate in the way of architectural renderings or anything.
Mr. President, can I say one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Two years ago, 2008, 2009, we had Saturday curriculums. We did not have the curriculum sessions that we had this year, where we did articulation based. I met with Mrs. Clerico, who chaired the kindergarten curriculum revision at those Saturday curriculums. And we both agreed at that point that it was necessary for us to have an all-day kindergarten curriculum. So we have been anticipating this for over two years now. In the fall, Mrs. Clerico, Mr. Sicletano, and myself met because we all sit on superintendent's advisory to possibly be able to do something concerning the all-day kindergarten. And we ourselves met with Mr. Nicolet to do where we could change some of the classrooms. Where some of the classrooms now, for example, at Ractive School, used to be the superintendent's office, but at one time, that was the kindergarten room. And what could be removed there and whether or not his maintenance men would be able to do certain things. We know that we have to meet with the county. We also know that we may have to get an architect, things along those lines. But this has been in the works for a couple of years now. Not withstanding that for many years, we have asked if we could have an all-day kindergarten. And we are pleased that this board is willing to move that ahead. We also have materials from Extended Day. Mrs. Servazio brought a trailer for the Yannick School, which now has a Extended Day kindergarten in it. But that trailer possibly could be, we had talked to Mr. Nicolet about putting water in there and moving the art room there. Our plan was that we would not have any specific classes. We don't want a resource room, we don't want a strategies class, we don't want a kindergarten class. In a trailer, so to speak, we would like to put our specials in the class so that way every child could go through that particular trailer and it wouldn't be designated for just one group of children and have them segregated. As far as whether or not the elementary schools could house at this point, suppose, for example, you couldn't do two schools, would you be able to take those children and move them to another school? That I do not think would work personally, but I'm not in a position to say that. Number one, with the schools you move them to are pretty much at capacity now. We're already talking about moving children, moving those classrooms and making changes in those classrooms to house the children that are in their own neighborhood schools. So I don't know that we could do that. Plus, it would probably involve transportation and some other things, which we wouldn't be able to do. So I would like to see each school have their own full-day kindergarten. And the other thing is, I don't think that educationally, it would be sound to have two schools have all-day kindergarten and three schools, or whatever, one school even, have a half-day kindergarten. That's not educationally sound, in my opinion. So I'm hoping that with the support of this board, with the materials that we already have from Extended Day, they've been very generous to the school district, and with the help of the county, that we can move this forward.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Any of these persons have, limited to three minutes, and we ask you to stay within this requirement. Anyone would like to speak?
Derek, where's my hand, please? The first thing I just want to thank this board for the full-day kindergarten. Academically, we know that this will benefit our children. But as a working mother for the last 25 years, who raised three children without a full-day kindergarten, I can tell you that this will be such a help for those parents that are, will be, they're always scrambling to find somebody to take care of their child either in the morning or in the afternoon, and this will really be a help for them. So I do thank you for that. That's very important. Sir, I have pamphlets to give out and a brief statement, if I may.
Can I ask you a question? Which, based on these pamphlets?
Yes.
All right, you want to pass them out first?
I also have pamphlets for anyone from the public.
Tonight, I'm responding to statements that were made during the BOE meeting on June 14th, 2010. During a public discussion at the end of the meeting, a BOE member made mention that a certain person should be prosecuted for making serious allegations against a district employee. The BOE member then questioned the business administrator and legal counsel on the situation and asked counsel for ways to prosecute the individual. At that time, counsel stated that the individual was within their rights to freedom of speech to make the information known. I would like to say that I am fully aware that this particular BOE member was referring to me since it was I, as spokesperson of the Nupti Parent Advocacy Network, who filed a denial of access complaint with the Government Records Council against this Board of Education to receive the 08-09 district cell phone records of a district employee. Through mediation with the Government Records Council, we learned about the November 2009 GRC case, Levachia versus the Borough of Mount Arlington. And we have a copy of that here. And this was provided by Mr. Pomaco, thank you. Which found that redacted cell phone records were indeed public record and these findings resulted in us getting a copy of the phone records in question. It was after that time that we felt that the records being public information should be made public. I, along with members of my organization, are disturbed that a BOE member would suggest that a member of an organization that has represented the parents and children of this community for the last six years be prosecuted for releasing public information, which was completely within her right. We are also disturbed that this particular individual would concern himself with only protecting the rights of his employees. We strongly believe that the BOE members do not represent their employees, just their employees, but are accountable to all of their constituents, who of course would include parents and taxpayers alike. As you can see by our pamphlets, we believe in the ladder of accountability. We also believe in keeping the lines of communication open between our group and our elected officials. In the last six years, we have made every effort to communicate our concerns to the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, and school officials, and we have found that they have been receptive to our concerns. It is in this manner that we would like to continue so that the health, safety, and educational needs of the children in this community are not ignored nor swept aside by those who are more concerned with political agendas. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Derek, respond.
I would really rather wait till for business, because it's really all business.
Derek, 147 Raymond Avenue. I'm sorry, I was taking notes on the full-day kindergarten. I'm just calling them up here. If you could just give me just one second. Mr. President, I believe Ms. Yamans at one point was talking about a gain, a net gain of about $215,000. And I think that's what I and some of the people in the public were wondering about, if that were applied to the $375,000 that would be needed for the full-day kindergarten. The perception that I had was that there was a shortfall of...
There's actually, let me address that.
Thank you.
Give a break, question. Because there actually is no shortfall. We haven't addressed the personnel issues yet. We haven't even had the Personnel Committee meeting. That meeting is going to take place on the 12th of July. So right now, as far as I'm concerned, there is no shortfall.
Okay.
It's, we haven't, we're jumping ahead of ourselves.
Okay, so the 250...
I understand what your point is and I understand the question.
I'm not trying to be confrontational at all because I'm in favor of the full-year kindergarten. I just, I heard a number and then I heard Mr. Zara say that the gain was after we reinstated many of these people and reinstated. So I just want to, I want a clarification.
Effectively, if we brought everybody back.
Okay. Mr. Zara made reference to a meeting that was going to happen on Wednesday. And I have to confess that I didn't catch all that.
That meeting was with the county superintendent that's coming to the district on another issue and he's going to mention this to him when he's here.
Okay, what impact does that have on full-year kindergarten?
It may have no impact. It depends. We're not really sure.
Okay. Mr. Koopa and Ms. Francioso made some very good points about logistical issues regarding full-year kindergarten. I see that Mrs. Clerico, Mrs. Clerico from Spring Garden is here. I guess I wanted to know specifically how full-year kindergarten would work logistically in Spring Garden. Do they have the facilities? What obstacles need to be overcome? Can either the board...
The superintendent can answer that.
Oh, thank you.
And again, once we put this, and again, I would say not a shortfall, but reallocation of resources. We have always so much money, we have to decide what to spend it on. There's certain things that we have very little choice and there's others that we do have some discretion. So that's going to be our very short goal for the next eight weeks, if we can handle this all together. Regarding the facilities themselves, we're confident that if we have approval to make this change over, that we will have the students. There may be some inconvenience regarding lunch, but that's not uncommon in elementary schools in this day and age. Schools of the age of ours were not built through cafeterias, they simply were lunchrooms.
So not to put words in the board's mouth, but it seems, the message that I'm getting with notwithstanding the risks that Mr. Koopa made and Ms. Francioso made, that there is, we have the logistics, we have the money to do this, and most importantly, we have the will to do this. So things look good for September of 2010 for full-year kindergarten?
Well, I think what I said earlier was that I will be prepared to pass a resolution on the meeting on the 12th, barring, you know, catastrophic events such as the county superintendent coming Wednesday and saying it's a possibility, can't go.
And the 12th, we have a meeting?
Yes, it will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jerry, 35 Old Crest Place, Nully. First, I would like to congratulate the superintendent and your entire staff on another congratulations on the ceremony the other day, very hot day. I'm sure you all suffered. But I think it demonstrates the way this district does that not only do we graduate another class of seniors and every grade, congratulations to all the principals, but some of these kids are going to some really great colleges. So again, congratulations, Mr. Zara. Mr. President, question for you. The night that you became elected president, I congratulated you on reinstating at an ad hoc level two of the important committees that the previous administration decided to disband.
Right.
Primarily personnel and academics, thank you.
Yes.
And you did, in fact, start there going, "Ad hoc." Do you have any intention of making them permanent standing committees again?
They were permanent standing committees.
You've made them permanent, did you have? I haven't been at all meetings. Have you had the two public readings to amend the bylaws, to add them back into the bylaws? They had to be removed by having two public readings. They need to be reinstated into the bylaws.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Do you intend on doing that? Because I think those committees were very important. And I appreciate the fact that you put that in.
As foreign policy chair, I appreciate that.
As foreign policy chair, I do, so thank you.
And I appreciate my many incredible constituents in the classroom and all of the building-level administrators, parents, everyone in the board, it's a partnership.
You're not being here for a child or board member to learn from, they can also college and they don't discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Francioso. Anyone else?
My name is Patty Girato. We didn't want to say Gavin.
Could you please repeat your last name?
Girato, J-G-R-A-T-O. I want to thank you for the curriculum presentation, but I also have a question. I didn't see anything in there for the special ed students that are in the inclusion classes? And what, if we're extending that program and increasing the amount of inclusion classes for the high school children?
Mr. Zara?
I can answer it, yes. Well, the curriculum is the same for all students in the inclusion class. The only thing that is different is the instruction, different instructional strategies for students who have learning disabilities. But they're in the regular classroom with the curriculum as it stands.
So you're telling me the same class lists that are given to all the students in the high school are also available to special ed students?
Not everyone, but a majority. And those students, they have a regular ed teacher, I'm sorry, those classes have a regular ed teacher and a special education teacher in the same class. So there's team teaching, where the special education teacher addresses the individual needs of those students.
Anyone else who wants to be heard? Thank you.
Vicki Flynn, 43 East Building Place. I just wanted to first comment that I'm encouraged by this discussion tonight. I was thrilled to hear because I believe full-day kindergarten is a priority that this district should and must have going forward. It's interesting when you look at the numbers, two-thirds of the districts in the state, from what I can gather, it's hard to nobody get, but it seems like two-thirds of the districts in the state have full-day kindergarten. So I am encouraged by this. I understand the fiscal constraints that we're all faced with, the uncertainty, the trend, but I'm hoping that this continues to be a long-term educational goal for this district as well as a fiscal, a budget goal. Because I believe if it's a budgetary priority, it can and will be done. And I hope it continues to be that. And I have a question about, I know there had been some talk a few years ago that full-day kindergarten was going to be state-grandated. As a result of those type of discussions, I remember there was a date, it slipped. Do we have some type of plan that we could look at if we needed to implement?
Well, Dr. Forzine was an advocate of full-day kindergarten and he was suggesting that they... they become a mandatory program, but then under the budget constraints and school aid, he was faced with, he backed off on that. Certainly, there's a different philosophy when you get a trend now, but we, we did prepare our curriculum. I'm not sure if you were here in the beginning of our meeting, but we did prepare the curriculum for full day. I think there's two things that I'm hearing on the table. One is affordability, and Mrs. Yeaman's is looking at re-picing together savings in several areas to ensure that it's affordable. And my concern is the timetable for approval. When we deal with schools that house students, we are under a different standard regarding physical plan, and we would have to have approval. And it may be a quick turnaround time. They may look at it and say that you do this, this, and this, you're buying, or they may watch the detailed plans and a long approval process. We'll find out on Wednesday.
There's a lot of talk about lunches and space for lunches, if and when this was implemented. Is there, is there anything that prevents, for instance, having lunch in the classroom? I know my daughter has the full-day kindergarten program in Lincoln. They have snack there. I know they go to the cafeteria for lunch, but is, is there a constraint legally from having lunch at their tables?
No, I think it's an issue of supervision.
Yeah, it's a staffing issue.
And again, in Essex County in particular, the age of our schools, very few schools were built with working mothers involved, in terms of risk, et cetera. So they just don't have cafeterias or kitchens in schools, so they make it throughout the calendar.
They do a good job of the community, they don't have lunch at their tables.
I mean, we've done it, I mean, we've done it under duress at, at certain schools when we didn't have, like, for example, when we had to redo the Gym Washington School for a time, they didn't have lunch, but it causes chaos and consternation.
I, I just hope that, I don't know if this would require like a subcommittee so that the discussion continues through the summer, it just doesn't get lost, I don't know, to nail these out and communicate it to the public? Because I know, I, I don't have the issue of whether or not my kid's going to be in full-day kindergarten next year, but I know there's a lot of parents that are in that situation, and they're trying to figure out, what am I doing this September 8th, right?
Well, we, we actually have letters prepared to that effect, as a contingency that go out to all those who registered for kindergarten.
Do you have like a drop-dead date that you say, you know, I need to, if we don't know by this date, then there, it's not a doubt?
Well, the date is the 12th.
This is 12th.
We'll, we'll have a resolution that day, and if, I doubt if we'll have sooner than that, but I mean, that's the day.
Maybe I will communicate.
Yeah, if, if we can, we will.
Okay. And that's it.
Thank you so much.
At least an email.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 McKinley Street. Before I was rudely interrupted. I do want to add my congratulations and thanks to Mrs. Franciosso for her role in all the services across the community and the schools. I know she has worked very hard every year that she's been here, but particularly in the last couple of years, to really bring about, to really bring about the changes to our curriculum and how school operating. I just think she's been wonderful. Mr. President, in one of the appendix B of the secretary's report, if I may, there's a line on under capital projects fund, under receipts, and the amount of $2,506.68 sets. I'm assuming that's interest earned on the funds in our capital projects fund? That's on appendix B, page 1 of one. Oh, yes, 40 of them.
Yes.
That's interest, and that's a interest of a period of just a month of May, is that, that correct, is this? I'm looking at the balance that's in the capital projects fund, over $16 million beginning of over 15 minutes, and, I mean, this seems $2,500 of interest. I know, I think they're really, really low.
They are really, really low. We're not getting, I think we're getting 30 basis points.
That's probably a quarter of a percentage point.
Do you have a better offer for us?
We weren't getting 10 basis points, two months ago, I moved it to 30.
Yes, again, I want to congratulate Mrs. Zara, the curriculum review people, Star College of Leadership. Again, it shows what we can do when we set a deadline and tell them we can do this. In that regard, I stand second to none in support of the full-day kindergarten program. Okay? But please, please, do not do this by running roughshod over government regulations and approvals that are absolutely unnecessary. We haven't had enough of that, Miss, this has happened a couple of years. And I very much want, and I think the logistics, then logistic, you replace all the ceilings with a whole school building, two school buildings, you know, a couple of them are going to be three weeks. We can do this, but please do not run roughshod over the regulatory requirements and the approvals of the programs.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Jennifer. Jennifer Higgins, 132 Lakeside Drive. I had a question about the full-day kindergarten. Many of us in this room have probably already paid the deposit for the Extended Day program, and it's a two-part question. One, part of the savings that the board might realize is not having to pay that contract for the Extended Day program for kindergarteners, and has that been factored into the budget figures?
Yes.
And second, yes? And second, for those of us that paid a deposit, will we be refunded the deposit?
I do know that.
Yes.
The answer is yes. You, you can be refunded, or if your child goes to the morning, the AM or the PM, you can transfer that money. Mrs. Servazio is just waiting to hear what you're going to do. She does have contact, you know, in place, a way of contacting everybody and sending something and having Mrs. Greaves back contact people that want to transfer and whatever. So she does have a contingency plan, and as soon as it's decided on, the people that have paid the full-day kindergarten, I'm sorry, for extended day kindergarten will hear from her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to be heard?
Certainly, there's a lot more that we'll say about Mrs. Franciosso in a couple of weeks and months. We're thrilled that while she has decided to retire, she will remain through the fall to help us transition with so many projects still underway. And again, I echo all the positive sentiments, you know, beyond that, she's been wonderful, and now I can confess publicly, I've known her since I was in eighth grade, and she was a first-year teacher. So I finally reprieve the trade range, but thank you very much.
All business. Actually, I'll defer to you for all business, because you had a comment earlier, making my, yes, you did, you were under all business.
I'll defer to that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Business, uh, sorry, Kucha.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to sort of under all business with respect to our website, commend the principals of the elementary schools. I don't know if people have looked at it, but you should give anyone in elementary school. Each one had a personal message out there for the summer, has a summer reading, it has supplies needed for the fall, and, and they put that up like the next day after school closed for the following, and they do, you know, they're, they're engine up for the internet is there, and it looks like it's going to be really good, and a lot of good things planned for September. So I'd like to commend the principals.
By the way, before I go to Mr. Raj, I just want to promise everybody here that next time somehow it's going to be cooler. I'm not sure how, but I appreciate you hanging in here. It's pretty bright out here. Mr. Raj? Mr. President, last month, we had this presentation by the General Associates. Have we heard, seen, or those whereabouts? Have we been given any grants since then?
I got one.
Anything? We didn't get that from you, though.
I got one.
So, so the board's a progressive, because if we're not, I'm in favor of this school board taking, asking the immediate to make a change, because there's some grants out there that, that may be available.
I think we were waiting for a 30-day full day retirement.
Honestly, that's a legal issue, and that really should be an executive, so it's the will of the board to close later.
Okay.
And just close that issue, which I think a lot of us, we will short, for Mr. Ms. Clerico. Mr. Zara?
Yes, I request reports of recreation with use of the school bus every Wednesday for eight weeks and two bodies during the summer, so you can have nothing programmed. I don't know if we have one available, but if we do, they will suit all the costs. Is there anyone who has a question regarding that?
We could use the money.
They're 15 cents a person.
Any other all business?
Just one question, I checked on the certificate of insurance, which is what they require on that. It's our bus.
Any new business?
Question regarding the taxpayers, sort of our school district. I'd really like to talk about that in the future, it's kind of late now, but I think it would be really helpful for our citizens to see.
I, I think it's something that we should really look to do in September, once schools open, perhaps mid-September.
Okay, Mrs. Yeaman, we'd like to make a statement before we go into the executive and discuss legal, one more time before we close. We will come back out, but there will be no formal action taken, so we thank you everybody for coming.
I'd just like to make a brief statement and extend my appreciation to Mr. Zara, Mrs. Franciosso, and the board on my appointment this evening. I have a wonderful staff here in Nutley. I have come to respect all the administrators in this district, as well as the teaching staff. Everyone here puts their heart and soul every single day into this district, and I am very happy to be a part of your family and to continue to help Nutley move forward. Thank you.
Before I go into the executive, I just want to make a brief statement myself in regard to all the retirements. Mr. Raj made mention to it earlier, that most of these retirements are under duress, if you will. It's not because these people wanted to retire. I grew up in the town, in the town my whole life, and my kids went to school here. I'm sure some of my grandkids will go to school here if I were grandkids. And when I look at the, the years of service from the retirees today, it makes me want to cry, because these are, you know, these are critical positions that we're losing in this district. And when I think about, you know, what we're about to do in restoring positions in two weeks from today, and knowing that we've, we've lost the assistant superintendent, who I have tremendous respect for, my kids went to Radcliffe School, she was a principal there after Mrs. Seraphinoe became the superintendent. And I just think we owe these people a great gratitude. We can't thank them enough, but I think they've done just an unbelievable job in 30, 40-plus years of service to the district, and I'd just like to give them a round of applause.
The Board of Education is discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJ SA 10:4-12, and therefore, be resolved, the Board of Education recesses, closing exactly at this time of the discussion of legal matters. If further resolved, the results of discussion may be published by inclusion, uninitiated subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or one reason for discussing such matters or process no longer.